Good evening, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. It's our October 24th meeting. Let's start the meeting with the President.
Plenarumineens to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have approval of the September 26, 2016, meeting minutes. I confess, I did not look at them, and I hope somebody did.
I did. I thought they were barely comprehensive. I'll move to accept them.
I'll hold second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, next on the agenda, we have citizens' comments, and these are for items that are not on the agenda. If we have anyone who'd like to come up, and just give your name and address, and go for it. Well, that was fun.
It was fun, too.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we -- let's let Andrea settle down, and we'll let Tim Goodfellow come on. Yay, Tim!
Twenty Planning Commission members, I have two things just to give you some updates on. One is the update of the Monocacy Seated River Management Plan. I might have mentioned that in the past. The Monocacy is one of nine state designated seated rivers. Each of them has an advisory body and a management plan. So the River Board is made up of five people from Carroll and five people from Frederick, and they've released revised updated management plan. It's out for public comment now until November 9. We're having two public open houses, informational meetings, the 7th of November in Tawning Town and the 9th of November in Frederick, just to get additional public comment. But it's on the website, there's a press release and a newspaper notice, so that's one of the things we're working on now. Then the other one I want to update you on is the Little Frederick, the county's comprehensive plan update. The county's spending a lot of time on creating these vision statements. There was a survey that went out, it was an online survey, asking a series of questions for people to answer. We got over 1,500 responses. We've grouped all those into the different categories based on the chapters in the draft plan. And the chapters, I'll just give you a rundown of those. Agricultural, the agricultural economy and land preservation, economic futures and education, energy and environment, healthy communities and public services, heritage and historic preservation, housing opportunities and affordability, and finally, transportation and public infrastructure. So the county is hard at work now trying to create a draft plan, nowhere near public release or public comment at this point, but it's like a vision plan. It's, you know, these chapters I mentioned, that's going to kind of follow underneath like the broad overarching vision that's being created right now, based on all the responses from the survey. And then each chapter is going to have their own kind of vision statement, again, kind of modeled after all the responses we've gotten from the surveys. And then, you know, there'll be lots of trends and drivers and metrics related to all those topics that I mentioned. And then basically, a whole series of initiatives and sub-initiatives or supporting initiatives, which are like policy recommendations, action items, and things like that. I remember the Planning Commission asking if there would be any kind of formal public outreach or communication with the towns, and I don't have an answer to that right now. I need to find the answer to that easy question, but I don't have an answer to that right now. Once this plan is, kind of the initial draft is done in late December, it'll go through our Planning Commission and then to the council. So, you know, probably early next year, there'll be something to kind of process and digest and comment on. But I will follow up on the outreach and communication with the towns from the people that are managing this project.
Thank you. Any other questions for town, comments?
At MPCA, it's Thursday and Friday, there's a panel. I'm assuming it's representation from most of the counties in Frederick County, and they're talking about planning initiatives to the counties. So, I mean, what better opportunity than --
That's the Planning Commissioner's workshop, yeah. Some people are Planning Commissioners attending that.
Great. Thanks, Tim.
Okay, sure.
Thanks for coming, appreciate it. Okay, Andrea, you ready?
Just a couple of things to update you on. There is a part of the Civil War Heritage Area, which Carroll County, Frederick County, Washington County are all members of. We do have mini-grants throughout the, actually just once a year, but there's our grants of $2,500. So you do a match, and then it's for a project built for $50,000. To my understanding, I have not seen the application yet. I'll just overlook that for you, so, sorry. There is an application that's going to come through for all of the official main streets in Carroll, which I'm sure the House probably does, but Mount Airy being one of them. So, I did offer the extra review, the extra letter of review by me and Sandy Anderson from Westminster is kind of heading this, I believe. So I offered to her, she wanted me to take an extra look on it, because I'm one of the grant people, so I can offer some assistance if she wants me to. I don't have much more information about it, I just wanted to just give you a heads up that that's coming down the pipe soon. Water and Sewer, as I talk about what seems like every month, we took the amendment cycle, so this spring, that included Britney Manor and kind of the redo of out areas, Water and Sewer section. We took that to the Board of Commissioners for a public hearing this month, well, between our two meetings. Also did discussion and deliberations with them, and they forwarded to Maryland Department of the Environment, and I just did that on Wednesday of last week. So, we'll get a letter in the mail probably in just a week or two saying that they got it and that we're actually starting our official review. But I wanted to let you know, it has been submitted on your behalf and on behalf of everyone else who had an amendment in that package. Earlier this month was State Highway Restrictions Pretour. I was not there, but I know Heather was able to attend the pretour. The regular tour, which is for elected officials, is scheduled for sometime, it was just rescheduled for elected officials sometime in early November, and staff should have all that information as well. I needed to check in with you all and see if you still wanted someone transportation-related to come to November 21st meeting. I found out that Bobby Moser, who I told you last meeting, she's more doing some other projects at this time, so the Highway Needs Inventory Letter and the Transportation, our Priority Letter, is actually done by my supervisor, Linda Edmanberg. So if you wanted someone to attend meetings, she would probably be the better person in our office to join us. So I just wanted to throw that out there, if that's something that you all still wanted, and if so, I can try and get on her calendar as well.
Heather, what's the agenda like for November 21st? I think it was packed.
It is a fairly heavy agenda. We have some projects that we want to get before you for approval, so that the developers can move forward. I don't know if that are the time constraints for those discussions.
Can you work with Andrea then?
Well, in November was actually just suggested by this body. We have no, I mean, whatever works better for your schedule, if it's in December or January, it depends.
We don't typically do December meetings, because it's right around, right after the holidays. So, we would look at, if we can't get it in November, then weather's not bad in January?
Yeah, I mean, and it's totally, like I said, it was up to you, or if there are specific questions that, you know, this body has, and if you want to email the questions, maybe Linda can sit down and, you know, formulate all these responses.
Bill, I thought you had, you were the one who had questions.
Well, I think part of the larger context that we're interested in, now that we have an updated master plan, and we're close to finalizing two new zoning districts. We've already sent one to council, MXD, hopefully we're close. And that's really destined for our infill areas. Some of the larger context for us then is the county's plans, the county's direction in terms of traffic management is one example, because of the proximity of 27 and 70 and so forth. And we are a gateway for the county. So what you see in that regard, and what you see with 32 and the other major arteries, and the same is true especially for Water and Sewer. What do you see as our capacity in the county? How do you see that distributed around the county? That's critically important in terms of the strategic planning for the county. And because we have such a distributed arrangement of communities, all fairly small, okay, what's the larger context of those issues, those critical planning issues?
Do you want to get those questions in an email to Bill?
Sure. But, I mean, the big ones, I think, would be useful to us in terms of the county context for what we're trying to do and understand how Mount Airy fits into that with our planning.
Well, Andrea speaks, and then Mike has a comment.
Mike, you can have a comment first.
Okay, Mike, you have to come up here, though. My little exercise program.
O'Brien on Park Avenue. I think her value to us, I think, is one of the biggest things right now, is how she can help us and extract the most we can out of this quarter, and what contributions she would suggest, or whatever. And if that can be facilitated, I think that would be a great help.
Thank you. Carroll County and Frederick County politely declined any further engagement since Maryland 27 didn't necessarily affect them too much. But Carroll County is a key identified stakeholder. And as we finalize that first draft, there will be a stakeholder meeting to present to stakeholders, which is Carroll County Government, the State Highway Administration, so our county transportation partners. So we will follow up on that, and I'm sure you very will be included in this meetings along with her superiors.
Thank you.
And before Andrea says that, I wanted to thank you very much, in addition to the county, for all of your effort with the Water and Sewer Master Plan amendments. It completely benefits the town, and we provide you with the information, but you do all of the back and forth with MDE and all of the heavy carrying with your commissioners and explaining a very complex situation to the county commissioners, and you do so very eloquently and succinctly, better than I can say it. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for all of your efforts.
Yeah, Andrea, thanks for all that. Thank you. I know it's hard being away from the sun, so. Okay, so the reason why we're really all here tonight, mixed-use draft, continued discussion. Let's jump right back into it, because we have stuff to do. Heather, how do you want to start this?
I would firstly like to acknowledge and introduce Mr. Chuck Boyd from the Maryland Department of Planning. We are very lucky to have Chuck here this evening. Chuck is the, he serves as the Frederick County liaison to the town, but he's basically a dynamo in Maryland Department of Planning, so he wears many hats. So I wanted to introduce him and thank you very much.
Absolutely.
For coming to help facilitate his experience with mixed-use developments, so.
Thank you for coming.
And there are a lot of familiar faces in the audience. We have the Caz Brothers here this evening, we have some members of the Beck family, we have Mr. Bill McCullough representing the Economic Development Commission, and thank you very much for your comments. We have Mr. Dave Baurston here, and Dave and I have been talking the past couple years on the progress of the MXD study. And of course, we have our partners with the Caz Brothers.
Thanks for being there.
Okay. And Mr. Thompson. So every, and a lot of other familiar faces, I don't know if they'll be participating in the discussion or not. So I see this as an informal work session opportunity. In your packages, we have provided to you comments, and I forgot, my most important person, Melissa Thorne. She's our Economic Development Manager, and she has provided comments as well. So those comments have been provided to you for consideration. Among those comments are from Victor and Craig. I'm going to say from the Caz Brothers, because I am terrified we won't nuss up your last name, but it's respectful. So I would, do we just want to go from where we hit the first comment? And do we need to discuss anything that isn't a concern, probably?
So Heather, where are we starting? Where are we starting, Heather?
Well, let's start with the Mr. McCullough's comments. I think we should look at them consecutive, like have all three comments in front of us.
Yeah.
But I believe that probably --
Are we starting on the first page?
Yes. So let's take Mr. McCullough's comment. And Bill, did you want to say anything? No, okay.
So is that this one that says comments?
It's the one, I'm sorry, yes, I know it's from Bill.
Okay, okay. This one's from Bill.
It's the one that starts off that says the Economic Development Commission?
Yeah, that's the one I assumed it was, I just had to make sure.
So one, if the third comment suggests that it's like verbiage change?
Wait, you're talking about number three, three A?
Yeah.
Three A?
Yeah, three A.
Oh, because the other one.
The others are --
Are not really, yeah.
-- supporting comments.
I skipped it out, by the way, I liked that.
Yes.
Well, I mean, the reason that we had the language number three is because there was a target area for the first phase, and that's why it doesn't, that was the reason it did not include it in our town. Are we still?
I would ask your fellow commission members, I mean, we have identified properties within a certain target area, but that would be up to the Planning Commission to digest that and see if they want to continue having that.
And I thought should we ever discuss that outside of a work group?
That may be in a group.
I don't think we have either, but I feel like it's a big project, and from the get-go, we felt like MXD --
Your microphone, sorry.
We felt like MXD made sense because of the flexibility and the comprehensiveness of it. But we also felt that each of these areas might have a different application. And the flexibility was valuable, because you are trying to complement different situations in every case. Where we start in terms of infill, it may turn out to be a different application or a different set of needs or things we're working with than after those spaces are worked on and we're looking at others that might even potentially be outside the current town boundary, so.
I like the within-town boundary.
The one that he has here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, too.
Nine, heads nine, yes?
Yes.
That was a good one, okay.
And actually, before that, we do have a comment for clarification from the --
KDA Brothers.
From Victor. On page one. Inquiring as to whether or not the definition of commercial would include industrial grounds. And I believe that there is some, this comment is based upon the fact that the property that they are interested in does have an industrial-y zone portion. Now, this is a mixture of commercial and residential uses, so it doesn't necessarily speak to the zoning of the land. Victor, would that help, does that help to address the concern? Or is it the intent that you would, you're, I don't want to say you want, but you would be concerned if MXD zone did not address industrial uses?
Mostly mechanical, it's not, you know, a big development issue. But mechanically, there are going to be, not just the Beck property, but there are going to be some pieces that are in town, because there is some scattered zoning in a different place. I know there's somebody bringing a fabrication shop, right, there are going to be entrepreneurs, but there are going to be people that may bring businesses here. And whether it's a 90-acre piece, or a 2-acre piece, or a small piece, we want to make sure that all of the potential uses that can contribute to the business climate can be included in MXD, if that's the way the Planning Commission wants to do it. So, if commercial includes industrial and any type of ground, so that you can apply this wherever you want to, then it's not a problem. But I just wouldn't want to create a, oh, we should have included this definition, because now we can't apply this zone to some, you know, different property that we like. That was, you know, what happened.
And does that concern originate because the uses are so specifically enumerated? How the --
No, mostly, what's eligible to be called MXD by the town? More eligibility.
You're talking about what the property is currently zoned as, not what you want it to become.
Correct. Right. What can you apply to the MXD as a planning commission, what can you apply it to?
Right, right.
Rather than --
Rather than making it become industrial as part of MXD.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, there's an industrial piece, even if it's an acre, and you want to get an MXD piece?
You should be able to do that.
You should be able to do it, I just want to make sure that the definition allows it.
Do you see what he means?
Yeah, I see what he means.
But do we want that? Yes.
I think so.
Because like the part of the Beck property they're looking at has -- And this ordinance is not just the Beck property, so.
Right.
Well, it's saying, well, that actually, it's a good question, yes, whether we want that. Well, we can always, it's not a requirement that we say yes to someone who has an industrial property. Is that what you're --
Yeah.
Well, maybe, yeah, maybe it should be something where if the property has multiple zones like this for -- I don't know, yeah, we're not going to --
Well, since we have a representative from --
Well, I'm going to just give you an observation.
Yeah, yeah, let's hear what he has.
You have a lawyer here and all this. Your whereas section is your intent section. What is your intent? And so this, I read again, I'm a semi-former zoning administrator, so I have had plenty of experiences. This is really just laying out the intent. It's saying that the town feels that it doesn't have a mixed use, and that it's had singular uses of commercial and residential. It's just illustrative of why you want to address the issue. So in this particular first one, it's just laying out why you're doing it, you're taking action on this. That's an important step of building the case. And someone later on says, this was, you shouldn't be doing this, and you have, you've laid out why you're doing it. And so this first one is just really just a declarative of why you're actually wanting to establish a mixed use zone. That's mine.
But it speaks to the actual uses, not the zoning of the property.
But that's not in, what he's saying is that would come later in the ordinance. This is just --
Well, this is just your whereas.
Right.
But there are other elements, you refer to them. So I just prefer making a parallel throughout the document. And again, it's just so that the town can include any property they want to in the zone. If you feel that commercial is comprehensive enough to cover that, then that's fine. I just wouldn't want someone who had any small, just an industrial piece, for example. If the town wanted them to do that, then it would be up to the town to say yes, but I'm sure you --
I think we cross, I think that right now, if somebody's going to want some sort of industrial type of business, like we were talking about the metal shop, that's going to go in the industrial zone. I don't see where --
That's the use.
The use, but I mean --
Are there properties, for example, in the town center that may have an industrial use that anyone foresees could be part of town center redevelopment, just for example, in a historic area? Or even on centers?
Non-historic area, absolutely not. No, we're not doing, no, 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 no.
He's talking about property that's currently zoned industrial, that would become MXD commercial slash residential, not, that would become, not that would have an industrial use.
Heather, would 1010 South Main fit into that?
Yeah, I was actually wondering about that, but I'm not.
1010 South Main fit into that, because it's --
It's the one behind the carnival grounds. That's --
That's plant, that's plant.
But I mean, that's industrial.
It is, yes, you're right, it is.
Yeah, so that was an example.
He was asking for a change.
He wanted a change.
No, I understand, I just said that would be an example of what -- So I don't know, we haven't actually discussed that, so we might have to put this one aside. Put that aside, yeah, let's go ahead. For now, but yeah, that's a good point. Okay, so we're just going to put this one aside right now. We're just going to put it in the parking lot and hopefully it'll, I'm sorry, is that not what you wanted, Heather?
No, I'm in my head.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, we're going to keep one going. Okay, back to, we're back on, next, the other comments, other than, we're back to Bill?
Let's go back to Bill.
Okay.
Well, there's one on 3 of 17. I mean, do you want to go through it?
Yeah, it's almost like we have all these pages all out, because that's what I'm looking at.
Right.
I've got the ordinance, and I've got Bill, I've got Melissa, I've got KDA Brothers.
It guides us, because it's actually in the document.
Right.
But I don't want to miss. Well, Bill's next comment isn't until page seven.
Right.
So we'll remember.
Okay, so then 2 of 17, there's a whereas on second paragraph, there's a question mark?
No, that is Tom and I.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's a carrier or highlight.
Okay.
So on 3 of 17. We have, and this is a comment that the Caz Brothers articulated in our previous discussions, that we, if there's not an opportunity to provide a certain site element, are we on 3 of 17?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. That not all redevelopment sites, you know, would be able to comply with this, or it's not applicable. So, and that's --
That makes sense. Well, what they're asking is to include the language as applicable, and I would disagree with that, because I think that it can be a, we'll assume that it's going to work, and that if it doesn't, then, you know, they show us why it doesn't work, and it's, you can have a pattern for everything. But I think that we leave it as it is, and that if there's a problem, you can explain and prove it, and all that. Okay, that would be fine. Head's nine, yes on that one?
I agree.
Okay, got that one, okay, next.
Because the intent is to include it.
Yeah. Okay, next, 4 of 17, unless I'm missing again. Melissa's got --
I'm not clear where our comments are going.
What are you, what's wrong?
Make sure the highlighted, the highlighted.
I know, but we also have Melissa's comment.
That's it, I don't want to miss. So Bill's on page seven, but Melissa's are done with the statutory sites. So she mentioned, but I made comments on most of hers, so, and I don't think they're yet.
Well, okay, so if we go to Melissa's, see, we're just this lucky to have this many comments. So 2 of 17, Melissa shares that under 2J.
Yeah, it should be outdoor.
Which is --
2 of 17?
No, on page 3 of 17, it's 2J.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
The location of sidewalk displays?
It's going to be outdoor display instead of sidewalk, because, oh, okay.
So I thought it was not a sidewalk.
Just to be a little bit broader, for broader purposes.
Is there any issue with that? So it said that?
No, it's, it's a good point. It's good semantics.
And then I think later, she's got the, just the same thing, but further along. All right, that's about it. Number, let's see, page four? Melissa? And Melissa's on, but that was 5A, that's still the same.
Yeah, okay, so she's, so Melissa's got page...
Melissa's 5A, and Victor is...
I've already crossed it out.
5A 3.
Yeah. Okay, so let's go with Melissa first, so, I'm sorry, which thing happened?
So it's page 4, and it's number 5.
5A.
And she just wanted to take out the phrase that's redundant. A signage plan for mixed-use development shall be included in the pattern book, when we already know it will be included because it's listed in the contract.
Okay, got it, okay, got it. Don't want to agree with that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so now we're on to Victor's comment, right?
Yep.
He's right about that.
Okay, so this is highlighting that, and we run into this, you know, a lot when we have a new, brand-new building, that tenants often have specific signage requirements because of their corporate logo and branding. What I would ask is that, is it in, the premise for this ordinance is that it's design-based. So would there be a general theme for signage that, you know, whether it be like all, you know, channels that lettering, or it would be indirectly lit, there would not be that component known upfront as to the, I guess, sign design, like throughout the, I'm looking at Craig. Craig, Craig is...
Actually, I'll let him, because he's done a project already that, you know, for Hubei Hotel, but it's very hard. There are certain signs that I know that you can, I can say, this is where the entrance signs could be, this is where we want to have directional signs, you know, this towards this way, just, you could do certain things like that.
Okay.
But number 3 really speaks to something that I would not pretend to be, which is the marketing guru for whatever company is, you know, building within our subdivision or our project or something like that. So whereas a strip center may have a lot of the neon lights or the big blocky letters across, you know, I don't think a town center has that. There's a lot of different character signs to a town center. A real good example is the Crown Farm. We can go to the Crown Farm, and there are some very traditional signs that tell you where to go.
Right.
But one of the restaurants, Coastal Flats, has some really interesting, you know, like old-time signs across the, it's the theme of that restaurant. The one across the way has different strip signs, but it's the theme for that restaurant. So, and they're all flat wall signs or murals, things like that. So I just, I don't know how you can...
That early in the process?
Yeah, that early in the process. I know that you guys look at signs a lot, though, so it can be done, I just don't know if it can be done that early in the process.
So let me ask you this. In our proposed sign ordinance, there is a section where we require a master sign plan for individual buildings. Is that something that you feel would be able to be, you know, presented at that particular time? So is, rather than upfront in the pattern book?
I think so, I mean, every building is going to go through a building permit process, and that building permit process can also go through the sign approval of what's going on in those buildings. And clearly, if it's, there are separate buildings within a redevelopment project, you know, you'll be able to see whether they look alike or whether they contrast with each other, you'll be able to see those as those permits come through. But I think that's, that is a good time.
Okay.
When those buildings are being built or designed and being looked at by the town, you can do it at that time.
Just to reiterate, that's, again, as the buildings are being developed and designed, the signage is going to be sort of part and parcel to that design of the building. I've been to Crown as well, and, you know, one building might have something very traditional, but catty-corner from it might be something very modern because it fits that to the restaurant or that building. But it's a nice eclectic mix, and when you take the streetscape in whole, it's great. But to try and say that these MXD developments are going to stick to this block letter on a backlit sign, that doesn't apply to it. We want the character, the differences, so that you end up with something that doesn't look like it's, you know, a strip box center. So you want, the one challenge that we'll, we all face in commercial is when you lease to a national chain, and you guys have dealt with that as well. You know, they have standards that they want to impose as well. That's where there could be a little bit of, you know, back and forth. But I think that, again, seeing the pictures that they provided and products we've done, even Nextdoor, a good example, you know, the signage really goes with the building.
Right.
You're not going to just all of a sudden just, you know, plaster up, you know, some crazy sign that would be on a different type of building, so.
Yeah.
But I don't know how you capture this here, you know, that you all are comfortable, but...
Well, we're going to have, in the sign ordinance, which we will eventually have, there is that master plant, there is that master plan for the signs there. So I think that this, I'm finally taking this, with this point, taking it down.
Right, but still, that master plan is going to be in, I think we need to put it in individual building. It's not going to go through a whole, you're not going to be able to get a master plan for the entire center at one time. It's going to go building by building.
And that's important to remember when we continue our discussions on the sign ordinance.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so we agree with this one?
Yeah.
So all of sign, all of section 5 is gone?
Um...
Because there is no signage plan.
Would you, would there be a, like subdivided, like, or a development sign, like...
Not necessarily. I mean, I'll speak for me, but not necessarily, because if you're incorporating an individual property into several different road crossings and whatever, you want it to seamlessly flow with what's already there, not necessarily create a block that says you've arrived somewhere else. And we're trying to create more of continuity in a lot of these properties. Now, that's different than if it happens to be an MXD shopping center, or it is, it's a standalone, on its own. There, it may be appropriate, but if it's a property that's intertwined with existing road network, we dealt with this at Green Cliff, the project we showed you, I brought the pattern book tonight.
I made some copies.
So if everyone wants to see it. Town of Sykesville was very adamant, they did not want monumentation to separate that project from the rest of the town. They wanted it to feel like it was just another, you know, block within the town.
Okay.
So, they may or may not apply it, I guess.
So would there be a comfort level just to notate that the signage plan will be handled under town code zoning regulations, that's well...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You sort of have that there in 4B.
Mm-hmm. So we will just strike A, A.
Yeah.
And then just modify the language in B.
Okay.
Can we refer to that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, what's next?
My, um...
Yeah, I know. Make a note first, so we all know who...
All of us, thanks.
Okay, so we basically were saying to refer to a sign master plan or something like that.
Right, right.
And you can make a note ahead. Okay, while Heather's still making notes, we're going...
Melissa has this comment, this is the next page, 5 of 17.
Uh-huh.
Just...
It's just it.
I'm just having to try to plural.
I'm not, you may want to allow for, enable them to have a signage plan or something if they want to proffer that or want to propose that that's slightly different than your regulations as a whole, or allowing them to have the flexibility, you want them to have flexibility. They don't have to necessarily establish, but if you want, if they want to establish something that's slightly different than your normal sign codes, and they want to give you a package at the time that you're going through this, that would deviate from the normal sign standards, that's, again, I'm just sorry to...
No.
And that's a potential for allowing for the developer to actually get some flexibility that they may not see that they have in the regulation, but creating, again, a unified concept. Again, so you may want to allow for, enable it, not mandate it, something of that nature. I think that.
Heather, how can you, how can you write that one out?
See me later.
Yeah, I was going to say call Chuck, and talk...
Okay. Sounds good.
Heather, call Chuck. Is there, is there a consensus to work that in?
Yeah.
Let's draft it and see.
Yep.
Thank you. So we're not calling it required, but we said you can.
Yes, yeah.
And offering a flexibility, and that's...
That's a requirement to enable it, or at least...
That's what this whole, you're right, and that's what this whole thing is about.
To be receptive to the proposal.
Yeah. Okay, so, I know you guys found a problem. Okay, so while Heather's making notes, we're back to 5 of 17. What did you say last night?
I was trying to find Melissa's comment, but it's really just kind of a grammatical comment, because it says those persons, so I want something that doesn't say those persons, or those people, or...
That was Melissa's, yeah.
Yeah, so I haven't actually found, what's it, D somewhere?
3C?
4, 3D.
No, so maybe it's on page 6.
Or comment 4, and D.
Oh, yeah, that's, oh, yeah, so C, top of page 6.
D.
Little C.
Oh, okay, so just correct that typo.
Yeah, just a typo.
Okay.
Those persons.
Okay, so now we're back over to, the back over to page 5 of 17, and it's 7 little B.
And 7B is not a comment, that's...
A leftover from you and Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so we're concentrating, in the yellows, anything that has the K.
And then, and then Bill's and Melissa's comment.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so now, good.
Yeah, because we're not to Bill yet, because he's page 7.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we're not to Bill yet. Okay, so now we're at Victor, D1.
She's saying there should be a mechanism so that they don't have to, at the staff level, for non-material changes.
We totally agree with that.
Yeah.
I think the point of this, actually, this is, this happened in Montgomery County, things familiar with Marchburg Town Center. So plans were approved, changes were made by the staff, and they were material changes in the opinion of many people, and it created an auditorium for about a year in the county. So the county did actually a pretty comprehensive look, see, of, okay, we don't want to send everything back through the site plan, but what do we want sent through? And those might be a good reference to see what standards are material and what standards are not. Because clearly, you know, adding more units, making something 50 feet tall or whatever you want to call it, are material, but, you know, changing the weight of a curb may not be planning commission worthy. So I think maybe the Montgomery County standards on what is not for the site plan might be useful in reference.
And is that actually, did they codify that, or was it just like a policy document?
I'm not sure if it's one or the other, but I know it's been a much quieter and much smoother process over the last couple of years because of that, so it'd be possible.
Right, we would, as staff, we would definitely want that determined as to where that comfort level is.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how do you, I mean...
Let's see if we can...
So I think it's a yes, but we need to get the same answer.
Yeah.
You forgot, what is staff?
Let's reach out to Montgomery County and see if we can get that guidance. Take a look.
Did you get, Heather, did you get Bill's comments on that?
Mm-hmm, I did, thank you.
Okay.
I apologize for, again, I apologize for making a problem here.
No, no. That's why you were invited.
You're sitting here, I'm going to make a brag.
Perceive a problem later on, and, because I know there's been lawsuits on this issue, who submits an application for an amendment? Once it's approved, once it's halfway through the development process, who owns the development? Who can submit an amendment to that development? It's best that you try to address that before you have the development. I want, I think the one in Frederick is Mormonsville, is now in a lawsuit, and I don't know if it's been settled yet.
We'd like to avoid that.
But the HOA says they own the development, the developer still has a portion of it, he says he owns the development, and so who has the right to make an amendment? Who has to be an approving, a part of an applicant to a development along the way? You may want, because these planned developments or these unified developments, they live longer than every one of us. And so you may want to try to define that as best you can. Again, I have no answer for this one, I just know that this is a real problem later on when you have these developments, and it's best to incorporate some components about reappraisals, and who's the applicant, and those kinds of things along the way. Again, I don't have a solution for you for this thing, but it just...
So I can't call you and talk about it?
Well, your attorney's the one who's usually starting to thump on it.
I want him to.
But this is really a problem later on. So just imagine, approve a development, it's halfway through the projects, they've subdivided a lot of pieces of the property, and there's people that love it, and the former, the less divided piece, they say, market's changed, I want to come back and submit a reappraisal. Well, and they've sold the development to another person along the way, you have multiple changes, and it happens. At that point, someone submits up an application, or they the real applicant of that development. And so you really have to kind of think about, and you may have to say, well, we're putting it in place right now, and everyone's on notice, that you got to get your sign off of your adjacent properties, or, you know, 50% of the people have to sign it, or each one's on their own, whatever it is, but you're kind of like at the beginning of it, and so you haven't, you haven't had the first approval development going through the process, you have the ability to set the rules so that you won't have the Mormonsville developments later on, hopefully.
Okay, that's a Tom question, then.
I think Tom's working on that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know, I think this is all simplified up. And then, the question is, can you take it by ownership? The problem with that is, it was originally owned, it got subdivided, it got sold off, that piece of property is no longer owned by the original person anymore, and do they have a say?
Right.
It's a sticky wicket.
Yes.
It's not something that I have any answer for you by any means, it's something, move on to the court case.
But I think, I think that if the parts of the master planned property are carved off to different owners, that owner, when he takes title, is subject to the site fair requirements there. If he at that point decides he wants to make a change, it's on him to come back to them.
And I don't disagree with you with that, but that should be said in there, that the property owner later on owns that piece of property, he has the ability to apply for an amendment, and he doesn't need to get other people's permission along the way. So that issue just needs to be clearly stipulated upfront, so later on, the residents say, oh, no, we bought this development based upon that being the way it is, and that, this property owner here is now saying, well, market doesn't support that, I want to change that, do you need their approval or not? I don't really care which way.
Yeah, no.
I just think you should be this kind of, I'll put the rules out there, serve windows right ahead.
I agree with you.
And I think we would like staff to be able to deal with that because we were just talking about in December. But we're not going to have a meeting.
No.
I don't know who staff is.
You don't staff.
We're going to just, we're going to research this, stay on it.
Okay.
And just to follow up with what you're saying, Dave, I talked, and I hadn't talked about this, how long does the pattern book standard apply to something? All of that is relevant to what you're saying, because even a restaurant may want to change its, look, do they go back through the entire process, or, you know, so I think that's a really good thing to look at, how, how the standards, and who can make the changes
who can make the changes or applications.
A prescriptive instead of permissible approach to signage, excuse me, to echo some of your discussion from previously, is also going to wind up creating that type of...
Revisit.
...dilemma down the road. The beauty of these things is that the watchword of this flexibility, and it's a design-driven concept, it's collaboratively developed, collaboration being between the private energy of the developer and the landowner, and the town's representatives or government's representatives to try to achieve something that works for this parcel. In some parcels, the industrial uses or industrial land would be a perfect fit, others they won't. There was also a similar comment I saw about pedestrian and bicycle paths, in some projects they're going to be an incredible dynamic and others are not going to work so well. So if the watchword here is flexibility and something is designed, you also want the flexibility to allow the project to grow. Because let's say you've got, and Robert touched on one of the things that I was thinking of, you can give it a signage. Signage, whether it's a national, regional, what have you, becomes so much a part of a brand or a signature for particular kinds of businesses. And what worst we want is not going to be what you do in the successor to that space is going to want to do. The same kind of thing I think you may want to explore for who gets to make the changes, just an idea I'll throw out, is perhaps if you're looking at this, and I don't want to make it more complicated than the scale of Mount Harry requires, but if you're going to talk about a comprehensive planning document, you may want to also be elect to approach that document in a phased or component or sectional kind of an approach, so that if you've got a combination condominium and duplex or town residential component, and then you've got ones downtown, shopping or mixed office residential, you don't want to have one necessarily wed to the other when there's needs to be changes. The economy is going to continue to change over time.
Good point.
And so you may want to look at a sectional approach.
Good point.
Yeah, I wish, thank you. Okay. Thanks for that, and keep on jumping, we need to... It did this. Okay, so we're back to... Page 5. Okay, we're to page 5, so we talked about, okay, but I thought we... There's some kind of incomplete section, number 2, under the Victor's yellow, how that paragraph below.
Well, what I put in there is, there are a lot of parentheticals in the top.
Yeah, that drew my attention to the paragraph.
There's a lot of important stuff that are actually in parentheses, and usually parentheses being sort of aside or not as important, but they are as important in a lot of places here, so just from a form standard, and I'm sure all the lawyers in here are enjoying this part.
It's one of those second times.
Yeah, most of those...
I like it, but I'm not paying for it.
Should probably be taken out unless they are, you know, referring to something else, because they are important elements of what you're trying to...
Well, I'll read the sentence. "All plans shall be prepared by a licensed architect, registered civil engineer, professional landscape architect, or other qualified architect, information for the submission." Oops, I don't know. And then there's the IE concept, but it's still...
I remember that was, that was the Houghtman?
Hartman.
Yeah, Hartman, sorry. They had wanted to say that they didn't want to, and they wanted to be able to have anyone thing, I think that's what it was.
Maybe there was something that was there, we took it out, but we didn't change the rest of it or something, but yeah.
Heather, do you remember this? That's what I remember perfectly.
I see where you'd be there. That's exactly what, okay.
Okay, so now how do we make this right, or make it sound like...
It was, I think at the beginning, it was like in some pretty form that there, just to talk about the integrity of the plan that we're considering. So is there, and I don't know if we ever discussed it as far as requiring, so would there be a lesser requirement for the concept plan? Currently, our, our site plan process do require engineered, you know, a professional, a Ron drawing.
Why, so I don't understand why, again, you already have it in code.
Right.
It doesn't really matter, it has to be a licensed professional done, right?
I'm not certain why we felt it was important to, but it made sense at the time.
And now that's...
Well, you're reiterating what your code already said, which is fine, but you already require licensed professionals to do the work, and it goes beyond concept plans, preliminary plans, final plans, there's construction plans, there's a lot of other, architectural, a lot of other plans, you already require professionals, so...
So then we should just take out the sentence, "All plans shall be prepared by..."
The IE, the example, right?
What, we're saying our code only requires the plans to be prepared by a PD, so why are we saying it again?
Again, I'll give you an observation, my recommendation is to, if things are like in all different areas of your code, don't put different specifications here, because you're wanting, if you decide to change it there, then you need to change it everywhere. And so if you do have a provision that says, oh, your plan submissions must be by professionals, that's all that's said once and it's applicable here and is everywhere, so you don't even need that. And I'll make the same observation about your notice requirements. If this is a different notice requirement than anywhere else, then it's fine, but if you're drawing special attention to this, and then later on you say, we need to get more notification, then you're changing to multiple places, see, you may want to ask yourself, if I have a section that just deals with notifications, you just refer to that notification section and then you don't have to go into detail, so again, I...
That makes sense.
No, he's looking at it, we've been dealing with this for two, three years, so it just is what it is at this moment.
Okay.
So just an observation, if you're repeating yourself and you haven't covered your code elsewhere, don't.
Right.
So for the purposes of that paragraph too, you really talked about just eliminating that one sentence.
Yes.
All plans shall be prepared.
That's what I'm proposing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Sounds good.
And my comment was to take the parenthetical off the, because concept plans are more general than preliminary.
And now we'll just go away with that?
No, no, because they're unrelated. I think it's important to state that concept plans are more general than preliminary.
Oh, so just make that...
They have a definition.
Make it a statement and not a parent, not, no, okay, take it out.
They have a definition somewhere else, yeah.
Okay.
So...
Is it a defined term in your code, this chapter?
There's a defined process.
There's a checklist that says what you're asking.
Yeah.
Which is in itself.
It's not a singular definition, but it's... There is a requirement, it has a checklist, so it's already defined.
Okay, so I'm back to... Don't even need it, we only have it in some of the requirements. So, okay, we're back to take the whole thing off, right? Okay. Going once, going twice.
And then refer, have we need to refer to the other code?
Okay.
Is the public hearing different?
Is the notice of the public hearing different?
Is the notice different, did we say...
Or is that the notice that we have for all of them?
We have 15 days.
We do not require a notice for other site plan.
Right, so that's right, okay.
Right, so this is specific.
So that's good.
This is specific.
Okay. Yes, right, thank you.
This has been too long.
I know. Okay. Can we turn the page?
So is number 3 staying 3A and all the notices about this?
Yes, yeah, because that's...
Yeah, because this is something different than what we currently have, yeah.
Okay, we turn the page, yay. So, okay. We've got...
Almost halfway through, that's awesome.
So C is persons, we know that we're going to make that change.
Okay. So 6, page 6, and then C, and then Miss Melissa.
Yep.
Those persons.
Yeah, I think we took care of that. Melissa, the reason that we do have it the way it is is because we intentionally are eliminating the types of businesses that can have drive-throughs to the floor that are mentioned.
Are you jumping to the next?
The little side room, Melissa coming?
She was up here, she...
We already changed that.
Yeah.
We already changed that, yeah, yeah, we're done with it.
Right, I do understand that, I guess disagree with the limitations for the drive-through because of, you know, limiting the possibilities of something that you might really like as a drive-through, and so just singularly looking at it as the typical...
We've talked about it for a very long time.
We've driven through the drive-through enough time.
Later when the kids show up to drive-through, then you can come back and try the other one in.
It's riding real hard and I can't get them to drive through.
But thanks for trying. You're welcome. But after tonight, there might be one.
Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania.
Okay, so Melissa's cool, or at least 5C is taken...
It's not, but it's done it.
So we parked in that drive-through long enough. Okay, so...
Before you go on, Heather, I just want to make sure, I can't remember and I couldn't find my notes about the, all the other stuff, the drive-throughs, do we actually have it in the language before about them being the outer portions of the...
The ends of the building?
Yeah.
Oh, we did.
We did at one point.
We did at one, we said it at one point.
Checked off, in the, this, remember the heart, the character?
Yeah.
We haven't incorporated...
Oh, we just don't have it here, okay.
Okay.
I know you and I didn't do it because I'm really busy and I'm sure you...
No, it's, I don't want it because...
Okay, okay, so it's just not all...
It's like 20 development standards, so...
Right, and we're allowed to do all that. Basically, everything's out of this draft, guarded out of the...
Right, right. E on 6 of 17, 6 of 17E, it doesn't include the character.
Okay, so we're just missing, so we're missing her.
So we, we just need to...
All right, got it.
Streamline that.
Okay, cool, okay. Okay, so now we turn the page to 7 of 17?
7, yes.
Yes, okay, and in 7 we have...
We have Mr. Bill.
Okay. Okay, let's do Victor first, and then Mr. Bill.
Is this referring to F or G?
His question?
F.
F, okay. Outdoor storage, here's a whole site plan that you're going to be screening.
We followed up on this a couple meetings ago, and the, the plan is actually the site plan, like when you're getting approved. And I think that, Victor, you probably have some concern of that because the individual tenants might not be known, you might not know their actual needs for outdoor storage.
Oh, I'm not as concerned, this is more mechanical than the...
That is, okay, then I am not going to go into it.
No, it's more that, site plan is a very general term.
Okay.
Uncapitalized, it's a very general term, so if there's a specific plan you want to see it on that has a defined term in the town, just define or put that capitalized term in there so that people know, this is just to know when it's... It's not the pattern book, right, it's not, it's at the site plan, that's fine, so let's just put capital S, capital P, then you know that's where that...
Okay.
The background on that was that you don't have any shopping centers like we have now, when they just take over parks and just create outdoor storage, that's where the bill...
Yeah, okay, okay, so we do capital...
Skids, pine bark, and that kind of stuff.
Okay. So now Mr. Bill's comment, do we all agree to the capital S, capital P?
Yeah.
And G, you can change sidewalks back to outdoor. Consistent with Melissa's going comment, G, that sidewalk display is...
All right, yeah, outdoor displays.
Yes.
But if it refers to...
A G, seasonal sidewalk display should be seasonal outdoor displays. And just to take out the word sidewalk in place. Yeah. Heather, did you get that?
I did, I'm striking sidewalk and putting outdoor.
Great, great, okay. Now we're...
Here to Mr. Bill.
I'm sorry. The outdoor display, which I think is the right way, but that last sentence may be problematic. There are going to be some outdoor displays, that holiday displays, that are called outdoor displays on sidewalks that may or may not want to be removed after hours, I just don't know if you should make that a requirement, like preparations. Preparations?
Yes.
I don't know, Christmas tree, whatever you're going to do, you know, sleigh, whatever, there may be things that...
Pumpkin.
It's not practical to take in everything.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have people do that now.
Do you want to put this in your mixed-use ordinance, or just deal with this as a, your separate seasonal display? I'm just asking the question.
We don't have anything to deal with.
Outside of this, again, if you're trying to deal with specifically your mixed-use district versus seasonal displays can be applied outside of this area too, so is it unique to this particular one, or is this just a seasonal function elsewhere throughout the town? And I raise that question in drawing the distinction between the two.
I think we're at the discussion originating from this, there's a condition that happens now that it makes things look a little cluttered, not organized. There was a desire to perhaps make these, especially if you stay, they're going to share their land area with residential units, but...
I, this, great, you just, you make it more challenging for flexibility, and again, they, quite frankly, will have their own private covenants and those things that are, that are those deals amongst themselves that you may not want government to get involved in those things.
Right.
So again, it's an enforcement issue, anything you put in here, don't put it in here if you're not going to enforce it.
Of course.
So let's take it out then?
I have a feeling that there's two different kinds of things that we're talking about. One is the ace hardware and the mulch in the parking lot, okay, but up on the sidewalk they'll have lawn mowers that are all chained together, lawn mowers and wheelbarrows and that kind of stuff, and that stays on the sidewalk, sometimes it goes in, sometimes it doesn't. You know, so, and same with, with southern states, they'll have lawn mowers and the same type of thing, and flowers.
Right.
So Walmart.
So are we talking, yeah, and then Walmart does too, so are we talking that type of thing, or are we talking the mulch all out in the parking lot?
Well, I think you have to look at it as each, each shopping center has its own covenants too, so that's governed by the covenants of the shopping center, and I agree, we don't want to add another, whatever their covenants is going to be, their covenants is going to be, because we have enough trouble now with things, you know, somebody will say, well, so-and-so has this, so why can't I, you know, kind of spoiled kid thing, I think that we need to just take it out and let the covenants of the shopping center or the town center deal with it.
Again, I apologize, you need to be careful with the operational aspects, the zoning ordinance deals to do with uses and the actual occupancy of that, that operation initially.
Good point.
The tractors and all those things, those are operational things that you can have past separate ordinances, and again, code enforcement, God love it, those kinds of things are, but again, they're in violation, and you're going to revoke their site plan and tell them to close the building. So you have to be able to distinguish where is this in terms of occupancy of the structure versus ongoing operations, and try to not conflate things and solve, you will not solve all your problems in this one word, I can assure you that.
I think that's what we're trying to do. That's my way of having her.
Never have, you want to be focused on what you're trying to achieve here, solely.
So should we go ahead and just take out the last two sentences, no sidewalk displays should be included after, you know, associated with the public, continue past 9:00 PM, the sidewalk display shall be removed from the sidewalk after hours, just take off those two sentences. Thank you, that's, the definition of operational, and that's really good.
Yeah, it is.
Well, we, we needed you a long time ago.
I agree, we didn't have a sense of clarity about it.
Do you not have to take off the beginning part?
I know, we keep that.
I mean, why would you keep that though, because that's operational again.
It is, the whole, that G is all...
That whole paragraph, just go.
I agree with you.
Remember that this particular subsection falls not under our zoning limits, but is proposed to fall under chapter 98. So what we're looking at here is, yes, it's operational, and I wholeheartedly agree, I do not like operational stuff getting in my, in the zoning limits, but just remember, this section that you're looking at here is chapter 98 section, not a chapter 112 section.
So now, what do we do?
So what do you advise on that? Do we do it in there?
I mean, you still come back to, the comment's still valid, and that is, if you're not going to force it to have it in there, I'm just, I'm just making the point that if the reason you take it out is because you don't think it's appropriate, it's zoning ordinance, this is not a zoning ordinance, this is a part of the... This is a part of the subdivision.
I'm sorry, you want me to go first with the first two sentences?
This is not, this, this section here is not the zoning ordinance?
Correct, this, this subsection that we're dealing with here is a part of the subdivision plan. A process. But the rest of the comments are still valid.
So, but is it, is it in the, is, there's the police powers that are, that are not in your zoning that are dealing with high health safety, you know, clearing the sidewalks from, from, from snow removal, all those kinds of things. That's not zoning. That's, so, these kinds of things fit into that and if that part of the, of your municipal code, cool, that's, that's fine, it's appropriate place to work.
I agree with that.
I don't think we have a section, and I agree with that. I, I don't think we have a section dealing with seasonal displays now, and if you want to deal with them, it seems to me, the considerations that you might have to bring this about, mixed use. Applied generally, and maybe that needs to be addressed by the town council in a section.
Right.
Of code enforcement or something along those lines rather than kind of, yeah, right.
Well, it's not an issue.
Okay, so, so what is the pleasure of the commission?
We were thinking of leaving the first.
First two sentences.
Yeah. Yeah. For now.
Right.
For G, you're talking?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
I agree, I agree, leave the first comment.
It's guidance, it's not operational.
Okay, good.
So we would.
It's great from the words, no sidewalk.
Yes, that one, that one was great.
Okay.
Okay, so then next, under B, that's, you're in Tom still, will there be an additional separate parking standards that need to be added, Heather?
I'm going to look towards our town engineer at this time because he would need appropriate comment on that.
All right, you thought you were getting out of the easy.
I know.
Mixed use.
Let me make a comment, Heather.
Yes.
Let me make a comment here, that was my next comment on my page. You've got to consider the impact of parking in any mixed use. And so I think there needs to be some words in there that gives the planning commission some idea of whether ask when a developer comes in. So I suggest a two second.
Yeah, absolutely. And with that, along with Mr. McCullough's comments, just referring to our town code. And, and we have a highlighter because I have a, from our town engineer, just to see if this situation would be any different than anything we already have tried under our parking ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, my, my initial thought is that we would just follow what our ordinance already says because, I mean, you address each building or, you know, similarly, the way the code's written now, we have, we have like a mixed-use retail in our parking limits now. We have residential in the parking and you would just treat each sites, you know, as it comes along. So I, I don't know that you need to develop something separately.
Okay. I think it depends on.
There are a lot of hands going up back there.
What's, what's the experience?
Depends on the, on the goal because Mr. McCullough, you know, he's got the structure parking wrapped, you know, being not visible from the street. And I think we had some other stuff, at least previously in there about that. I mean, that's very different than our current, current parking ordinance. It would seem to be more consistent with.
The vision.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, and, and this is really, if we incorporated this, this is really the only more prescriptive design criteria that this code would have. And, you know, I think it's very thoughtful and meaningful.
Uh, two things, as it pertains to the current, I had a look at all kinds of, my recollection is that, and we probably would have dealt with this downtown, which we haven't yet, will. The parking standards really were never thought to address condominiums or rental housing. So when you have a loft, basically one open room flat, or you have a one-bedroom apartment or condo, or a two-bedroom, that's a different impact from a parking perspective than a town home or a single-family home. So I think we need to explore that, and I think I've said all along, since we started this, parking ultimately is going to drive density across the board because you got to park it to build it. So those standards are very important, but they are going to, at the end of the day, dictate what the parking apartment ultimately gives in retail or commercial and residential. So that's, that's my first point. So I don't think we deal with that in a specific way for other types of housing other than the traditional housing we've had here in the past.
We do, now, Rob, and, and this might not be what you're referring to, but we do have a residential apartment parking calculation of two spaces per unit. We do have on our task list to entertain parking, a reduced parking standard for what is considered an efficiency unit of just.
Exactly, so that's what I, that's really, if it's a two-bedroom apartment, I think you look across at other jurisdictions.
Two spaces.
They, they deal with these more regularly, they do have a different standard of those types of residential units, be it a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom for that matter.
I think we look at square footage as being the difference for, between like a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom.
Yeah, but square footage doesn't really dictate who's there.
It's going to, it's going to make a difference in the, in the marketability of the, of the, of the complex.
But what the real impact is.
Yeah.
The other thing is with mixed use, you're going to have more opportunity for the shared parking.
Yes.
Yes.
So I can see when people are out there today, there are other people are there, you know, shopping or doing other things. So there's, that's where that really kicks in, which we already have written in the code.
Well, actually, that brings up a good point, and it has to do with the standards themselves. Some of the standards that we're looking at are meant to be standalone projects. If this was a five-acre square of these property, this is how many spaces we want because people are going to come and go from here in a certain defined way. A town center project, an M X D project in the town center, however you want to call it, the, one of the big elements is it's a pedestrian-oriented project. Is it necessary to require, I'm just saying require, the same number of spaces for the exact same products that you would on a satellite property? I think the comment is very, very correct in that whoever's developing their site is going to park it to make sure it's successful. No one's going to put, you know, a hundred thousand square feet of commercial and put six parking spots. But the standards that may be existing now for the sites may not be as applicable to town center pedestrian-oriented things. So I think it is important to take a look again at the standards and see again, maybe an adjacent, whether it's Montgomery County or Frederick County, how they've dealt with, if they've changed, if they've made any revisions or anything to parking standards as they apply specifically to those types of town center parking. Again, could you, could you just put a provision allowing for a development to submit a parking proposal that provides all of that documentation, that allows for the flexibility and the range of mixed uses and the variations? And they submit a proposal to you and say, hey, we looked at your standards, we're going to submit something that's slightly different. You review it, you get your engineers to look at it, and you ultimately say, we approve this and we modify the standards for parking for this mixed-use development based upon the submissions. And again, it's flexible based upon, you know, evolution of park, millennials drive less, they don't need the cars as much, Uber is becoming more popular. And so we don't know what parking standards will be.
Good point.
Five years from now. We know that they're less than they were ten or fifteen years ago, which is what all of the engineering studies are based upon.
Right.
So you want to provide a flexible tool for consideration when projects come forward here.
Heather, do we already have?
I don't know if it's in your code already.
There might be some general provision already that allows the planning commission to look at something and deviate from that code, is that already?
Well, when we did that for the East Ridge property.
Yeah.
Then we're going to believe you're correct.
Hardship.
If you have that, then you reference that, but not as a hardship.
Have to be a hardship.
No, no.
No, yeah, it's not a hardship.
It should be, you know, allowing them to spend.
That was a hardship. We need.
Not a variant of pressure, but an actual allowing them to give you raw numbers, give you examples of other places that have done it, how you, and something that you can go and look at.
There may, I, I know there's something that's been discussed about design phases and other aspects of this. It would seem to me, instead of trying to figure out down the road, how we park different components of a project, which we don't know what they are yet. You may want to move some of this discussion or allow it to be moved into that designed kind of venue. You, you may have someone who wants to come in, where you actually have mixed uses in a section of this or whatever. They may want to propose instead of parking fixed individual users, you might want to see a campus-wide parking proposal or a central parking proposal. For multiple users. That, but again, if we're looking at fostering pedestrian-friendly, pedestrian orientation, that certainly would seem to be, you know, pointing in that direction. And, and again, I mean, the thing that's nice about these projects, or when you make them work, is instead of having someone with a property they're interested in, look at a code. And have the code tells them what their property, project is going to look like. Because if you've got this requirement, you've got this requirement for minimum lot with this requirement, it kind of gets backwards. Where the design comes in for the local government to review, to determine whether or not that overall design really does work, given some of the real local peculiar dynamics of this community. You know, and for instance, you don't have public transportation, so obviously parking, you're going to have to have it where else you've got to park to make it work. So, yeah, you're going to have to do something like that. Once again, I think if you could create something that's promissive, if you will, instead of prescriptive, so that it would allow someone to come in at the design phase. Not necessarily a hardship type variance, as I mentioned, Rob, to the edge we're getting at, but as part of their overall design, you can have standards for, you know, we feel we need parking of X kind of threshold or whatever. Let somebody come up with designs, they may know up, I don't know, it's just one layer way or two dimensional.
Thanks for instructing.
So basically, what about, we say right now, we may have a parking proposal, Heather, and, because I do agree with what you're saying.
We could entertain a parking proposal.
Yeah.
Well, if, if we start to adopt some of the criteria that Bill provided, only one of the things I noticed there about structure, if you got into structure, which you probably need to deal with. A lot of these projects, they can't wrap them completely. And so in that case, it's, again, it goes back to the architecture properly, architectural designs, you don't see, beyond Baltimore, you have a lot of places you see them, and you turn down the side street, and the architecture is beautiful, and you kind of do a second look, go, oh, that's a parking garage.
Right.
So to be fully wrapped is probably unrealistic here in the scope of Mount Airy.
Right.
But certainly, the architecture is still very important.
Andrea, you wanted to say something?
I had the bits and pieces, I was going to say something, you know, I read that, but I think it is really important when looking at examples of what can be, you know, how Mount Airy can take different examples and apply in here. It's really important to take pedestrian-friendly approach, but also putting it in a auto-centric world, like being able to compare and do that, balance between both of that. Not going to say the thing about there is no public transit, but also the fact that your proximity to seventy and all the other counties that are around here, I mean, a town center, you would want to draw from other places, you don't just want to be here. So even though the pedestrian feeling is there, there's some opportunities in town that, you know, physically getting from one part of town to the other is impossible. So just have to, parking, I, I really like the idea of a general parking plan for the whole complex. Therefore allowing, giving that, you know, overall sense that you're in a sense of, and that it's cohesive and not just like this, this, the other, not that's.
Yes.
I think in that, in that section, it could kind of give you an either or, you can go with the standards of the town, park uses, or you can propose.
Put a purpose, okay.
And it's parking.
I like that.
Okay.
For the overall project. Because a small-scale project may be perfectly fine.
Okay, so that, thank you.
And I think that a lot of these very particular items will come into that design.
Right.
I don't think that there's a need to enumerate each one as a mandate.
What are you looking at, bills?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
So because some will work and some won't based on the design. And I don't think it's worth it to go through each single one and say, well, what if you had a little two-acre piece that's chopped off the corner, that has to be parked in the back? Well, what if the M X D was for an industrial piece that's in a different part of town? You're going to tell them to do a town center look and then park it on the side. You know, this gets really, there's a lot of if-then's that come into this.
Right, it's almost going against what we were saying about some flexibility.
But the, but the spirit of what's in here, having, you know, like you said, that disguised parking off, all of that is what you get to decide by looking at that parking plan. These are good elements, you just don't want to mandate them, you want to make them something that you want to see in the, in the park.
I don't have the code in front of me in terms of the regular parking, but I, without referring that again, I would be concerned with having that as an option. Having the regular parking as an option.
You could just, if you didn't want it, me, you could just say.
I'd rather.
Propose a parking plan.
Yeah, I'd rather just have a purpose.
Parking plan proposition.
I think I'd look at that, I could put that in a block, but why, you know, because then if we don't like it, we can't say, oh, no. It's like, oh, it's right here in the.
So we're saying, we do want to have a parking proposal, okay. Everyone nodding yes, not asleep, give a nod of yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just making observations, again, I think you need to look at your phases of when you're going to make decisions. Numbers of parking and, and how you're going to park a place is kind of dealt with at, at one stage. Actual site plan or, and, and design of the building is in another, so, so you can't do it all at once, you got, you have to separate them out. So sometimes you don't want to conflate them into, into one particular approval. You don't want to tie your hands later on on these details around, you know, whether or not you brick the whole front or how you twist it around until you're actually at the site level. But you need to know early on, what are my parking standards? That determines footprint size, layout, circulation and things like that. So, so you have to kind of separate the two out so that they can only build to a certain amount, then they know who they can market to, et cetera. So there's two, there's different phases of this, of these approvals along the way, so you just have to be kind of cautious and cautious to that.
Yeah.
Kind of similar to the prelim in a site.
Exactly.
Prelim, you're just approving the number of units, they're just boxes. You get to site, then all of a sudden, now you're doing facade and so forth.
Right.
Maybe a prelim, you're saying, here's our parking proposal, we're going to have a garage and then just, you know, have a total number between the three different lots of seven hundred spots. And then at that time, well, site plan, okay, well, these will be in destruction parking with lattice and this, that, this won't be up here, this will be up here.
Heather, that makes sense that you're talking about, about the phases. Is there any way you can?
Yeah, I'm.
Kind of designed, mainly designed such as this phase component.
Yeah, I, the parking proposal, it, it may just be the, you know, the regulatory aspect that, that so used to for almost two decades. I feel like we should give them a baseline or.
Because, you know, we were sitting here last month, two months ago saying, okay, we kind of want to know what you want, so if we, flexibility, we're all about it. But we come to you and we show you a plan, it's X amount of residential units and X amount of square feet of commercial, and here's the parking, and you go, we don't like it, we just wasted our time. our time. So, there sort of has to be, we've got to get back to some guidelines.
Consistent.
The flexibility is good, but as I said, just referring to the current, just goes back to the old way, like you said.
Right, and I don't want to just, you know, I'm not saying that, and I agree with parking, because I think that we have to have some sort of basis to.
Well, a good example, just a small example of going beyond what Barney was saying, but I think where he was going, is next door, the two buildings next door have very limited parking, okay? There's residential apartments down here, okay? Those residential people park in those other spaces between municipal lot, the lot on the corner, and behind 114, and by the time the business is open, most of the people are gone. So, that residential component is going to be very different in a project like this as opposed to a standalone townhome community, condo community, or shopping center for that matter. So, that shared use, as Victor was saying, is even more shared, for lack of a better explanation, in these types of projects. So, again, that same, that baseline is still a little heavy, and maybe it's not 100%, but there's definitely, there's not the need for as many residential, so if you say, for example, you start talking about condos and apartments, and you start saying, well, you know, what about the guests? Well, we have all this surface parking, you know, so do we really need to be thinking like a standalone apartment condo project, or a standalone townhome project that has all this overflow parking for the guests and the visitors, you know, and the party and all that stuff? So, that's where you can really take that shared approach even further in mixed-use communities.
Yeah, Barney.
So, Lyndy? So, would it make sense, kind of what Rob was saying, give them some kind of guideline, is we would have our prescriptive, as we have now, but their plan should show us why, why that should be relaxed, because there's so much.
Or change, changes made to it.
Yeah, okay.
But, in other words, that plan should be, you know, telling us, you know, what the formulas are that they're using.
But make their proposal and include a rationale.
At the same time, we still maintain our prescriptive.
Right, so you're saying adhere to the standards in 112-7A, which is the size of the lot, or the size of the parking space, and B, the spaces required.
Right.
So, that kind of, that's your standard, that kind of stays in there.
Until they prove.
Whether it's three lots of 25 parking spaces, or one lot with 75 or 100 parking spaces.
Provided that the code already allows, as Tom was saying, for that to be incorporated in site plan approval and not a separate variance process.
But if they are waiving something that's in, do they have to meet that hardship standard? Because if they do, then you can't, because they're essentially, they're creating their own hardship by the size of the development, and so we.
If that's the case, we'll be just putting minimal standards.
I would recommend that. Now, I would recommend you require them to meet the minimum, and if they want, then you want to incentivize them, and say, if you don't want to meet the minimum requirements we have, you give us a proposal of what you think is, and then you may approve it, and then you approve that revised standard. And so, that you have the minimum, you know what the rules are coming in, and if they want to be incentivized, and they say, you know, my project is less, I want to prove it to them, and then they can come in with a proposal that's different than that. It's kind of simple. If you don't require variance or approving of hardship for it, they're incentivized to do that.
In the townhouse regulations, such as they are today, we do have a variation to the requirements for those types of projects in terms of subdivision plan, and it sets forth a standard that is less than hardship, I forget what it is, but it's got some jingle, you know, reasonable, whatever, or something. So, you know, you're probably talking about adopting something more along those lines than imposing the hardship standard, because that would be impossible, that, well, we don't.
You don't want to do that, you don't want to do that.
Self-create hardship, so it's not.
Yes.
The hardship standard is intended to, you know, something that's.
Right.
Yeah, I do that.
Yeah.
Again, I would encourage you to be, you've got professionals here along the way, you don't want to make the two birds at the front end, or else a developer will say, screw it, I'm just going to put the gazillions of parking spaces, and you're going to regret it later on, when they really want to create a walk or a bar.
I think we're all like working towards the same goal.
Same thing.
I just don't know that baseline, you know, and then.
Well, you have a baseline, you have your overriding regulations in place.
And now Leslie said you just wanted a parking proposal, you didn't.
Well, I don't like the status quo, because if they can't, if they can't show why it should be the status quo, we have all this parking that we don't need.
Right.
Right. Well, there's an incentive for them to cut down on spaces and put buildings in. So, there's usually a market incentive and not having to meet, particularly if your standards are old standards, a huge, huge number of spaces that, this day and age, we're seeing old shopping centers put in.
They don't make it, they don't, yeah, they don't do it like that anyway.
Because they don't use it as parking.
Right.
The only concern I would have in that, I like Barney, he's a good guy, but he's going to have to have some standard to look at a waived standard. So, you know, he has a baseline, and he's worked on that, you know, many times. We're all going to be doing, whoever comes in with the MXD project is going to be doing it for a first time, and I don't want to say to Barney, this is a really good parking plan, he's going to have nothing to reference it from. I would just say, go back again, maybe we do ask or look at, you know, other pattern books or other jurisdictions to see if they looked at it and codified it or made a policy out of it, to say, here's the lengths that might work for us, just to have a baseline standard, so it's not just us all guessing.
Yeah, I don't, guessing is inconsistent and unpredictable, and Barney and I aren't always going to be here, and.
Well, that is true.
Yeah, so I want there to be consistency and.
Again, I would assume that you're going to require them to demonstrate other places that are built, that you can actually go to and see and find out, this is what the standard was, the German pound, or wherever it is, so that you have that information. And professional engineers are allowed to do this stuff for you, and if they're motivated by reducing parking and putting more square footage and leasable space, they'll do it for you.
But I think the town, in all due respect to town, I think that's the position they've been finding themselves all along, is they want a standard that they can enforce. That's been kind of the tough nut to crack in this whole ordinance.
Everybody tells us they don't need as much parking as we say they do, so.
But again, my point is that you're approving an MXD area, you're going to stipulate how many parking spaces per square footage, whatever, that's the enforceable component of this thing. Once it's, and then you don't give them a building permit, or you don't give them a CO until they actually have that, this parking in a phased manner, and I absolutely agree with this, you got to kind of recognize that you're not going to build all the parking at once, you're going to want to phase it in, and so your phase plan needs to have a great amount of parking, great amount of amenities for the development along the way. The phasing plan is probably one of the most important components of this process.
And parking is just.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so now, what did we, now, Lyndy, were you saying to incorporate Mr. McCall's comments into, like, sort of, let's say, would be applicable to a phase in, like, different phases, or?
Well, I like the idea of, I mean, this is all, this whole thing is all going to phase kind of this process, so, and I like that idea of somehow we set this ordinance up in that phase process, where it would make more sense. We don't talk about parking when they first walk in the door, we talk about parking when they bring in a site plan or something, but, that's just what I was thinking, but I don't want to throw you off right now. But now, what, how are we, what are we going to do with this? We're going to have an added parking standard, and then have them explain, or explain why they propose something different. I don't want to put them on the defensive that they have, that they have to come with our parking standard, but then give them the opportunity to say, well, I've got a better idea.
Right.
Well, yeah, the thing is, the idea could be, I, I'm right next to the railroad trails, and, you know, people can walk downtown, and they can walk to certain places, or I'm going to contribute to something that helps people get across Route 70, I mean, Route 27, you know, safely, or, you know, it doesn't have to be, oh, I can just make less parking and build more buildings. I mean, there's creative things that can be done, if you are going to add some value that's not another parking space.
So, that's for the number, like, the number of parking spaces, but about the design of apartments, so do we want to add those as, you know, a mandate, or do we want to put them as general guidelines?
As guidelines, because I don't think.
Yeah, not a mandate. All right, so incorporating these as general, like, general guidelines.
Are we incorporating these?
Um, no, no, we haven't.
What are we incorporating guidelines?
I am, I'm trying, I'm speaking to Mr. McCall's, one and two, or, I'm sorry, two.
Here's the standards described in 112-7.
Parking design standards, one and two.
For the size of the parking space.
I need some, I need guidance as to the disposition of that.
I'm sorry, Heather. What are you, are you using the, you're going to put number two, structured parking in there?
I'm looking for guidance from the planning commission as to how to incorporate the parking design standards.
If we're talking about phases, why couldn't we say upfront that there is a proposal or there's a sharing with us, whether it's going to be a traditional parking approach or it's going to be an alternative approach? They're going to have a sense of what they think will be a better fit with the design of the building and the layouts.
And it is at the beginning, because the design comes from the, it was wrong, you know, it's at the beginning. So, if there's an expectation by the town that it's going to be, you know, for mixed use, the commercial uses is five for 1,000, that's going to dictate how many square feet and how many parking spaces, which then translates to run, to putting it on a plan. And then same thing with residential, if both flat or efficiencies, one space, and two bedrooms, two spaces, and three bedrooms, two and a half space, whatever it is, those basic standards should be outlined, so we, now, if we, that's the basic standard, but then we say, okay, we're next to railroad trail, or we have X amount of residential, or commercial flat parking is not going to get used, that the spillover can go there, then you start to make that flexibility. But I think we, as professionals, need to have a baseline that's going to create the plan, I mean, it really is. And maybe that baseline is more flexible than what you have today as far as your standards, knowing it's MXD.
So, it's a parking standard.
Maybe it's not five for 1,000, you know, maybe it's something different that comes from other MXD-type product. But I think that, I think we want that, so that we don't come in, spend a bunch of money with the engineer, and then you go, we want more parking. Because when you say more parking, that basically wipes out buildings, moves roads, things like that, and that's expensive.
Well, and it can also, if we don't have a proven standard, then we're just going off of what we, like, our perception, well, that's not.
Yeah, because you're learning, you know, always doing. Okay, so we agreed, we're going to have some sort of baseline parking standard, and the flexibility also, coming back with a proposal, but I have a better idea.
Again, that baseline may already anticipate something different than you have, based on, we could do a little bit of research.
Yes.
Yeah. So, but that's kind of like parked over there.
So, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be.
It's okay.
Have we answered the question as to what we're doing with the proposed or the suggested parking design standards?
No, I think.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I have.
No, we were saying we need a baseline parking, we still don't.
Okay, baseline parking, I'm going to research that, and that's for the quantitative element for parking. So, now let's speak to, if we can, the proposed, you know, the where the parking should be as suggested.
Right.
What does the planning commission wish to do with those suggestions?
I think you have to be very flexible in that area, because.
You can't say where.
You just can't say where now, because you're going to develop.
You don't know.
Seven and a half acres of property.
Way back in the beginning, when, well, your beginning was way before my beginning, but, you know, still, that was at least two years ago. So, even in a, even in a development where, let's say, it's mostly commercial or whatever, I don't think, I don't think we're looking for big, you know, Walmart-type parking lots.
Are we? Are we, with these people I saw visiting, the developers?
No, I think, again, the idea driving towards the whole design, putting the buildings up front, already.
Good, you're still thinking of that.
Well, of course.
Well, I was going to say, when I was looking at some of the emails that you'd sent from the Katz Brothers, from Victor, so, a couple of them were good, but then there was the one that you called the town center, which to me looked like outlet mall, you know, with a few plants.
I'm talking about the pictures.
Yeah, the pictures.
The parking area.
Yeah, some of the pictures weren't, to say, this is, it's really, some of the questions were made to height.
More about the height, so, yeah, and I got that part, but that one picture that was, it was entitled Town Center, and it basically was a big parking lot with some small shops on the sides. Okay, so we're still looking at, Rob, we're still, have the same idea as before, in those parts, okay.
Okay, so we're, the wheres we don't know, so we're not going to have, to find the where. But are we going to, I'm going to, I'm going to put it, I'm going to play devil's advocate here, I'm sorry. Are we going to say that all the parking has to be in the back, because there is a street design part, that there will be some parking on the street, okay? I can't say that either.
I think the parking is going to be very flexible depending on what you're, what you're building there. You might be building three buildings, it would be beneficial to have each have their own parking, or you might be building three buildings, it'd be beneficial for them to share a lot, you know, 100 parking spaces in a lot, or, you know, whatever.
Or it might be a garage.
Instead of three lots of, you know, 35 spaces each.
So, back to Bill's comment on structured parking, I know it's later in the ordinance there's a section about the height of the buildings. Will that be adjusted if there is structured parking, because it's kind of, I don't feel that it's very, that it's going to help move along with parking, or if it's only a two-story parking structure.
We'll get to that. And do you mind, if you're seeing yourself by the.
I'm showing Greg, you're a member of the.
Oh, okay.
He's no issue.
Okay, welcome. We'll have to discuss it, we'll get to the height stuff.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to finish up.
Regarding the placement of parking, I know you have some design guidelines at one point, you may want to just play out some, what you'd like them to see, because you're a rationaler, each site's different, depending upon the, you know, the road that's in front of, the speed, you know, orientation building, except, or orientation of lots, it's just impossible for you to say you have to have it at the back. There's just too many parameters for you to, but you can lay out in a design, and usually you can, quite frankly, you know, reference some of the APA or other types of, you know, engineering examples of these things. I think you get a sense from the intent here, what you're trying to have when you look at these things, and you're allowed for, you know what you're looking at, and then they start to send something that's, you know, clearly off-base, you'll be able to push back at that point.
Well, and you also have situations where you have three buildings, and they have, they have 35 spaces each, and somebody parks up here, and then walks all the way down through, and they're parked at this, at a smaller lot. You know, at that point, it might be beneficial to have a larger lot that all three buildings share.
That goes back to operations.
Right. So, it really, it all depends on what you're building, what the design is.
Okay, all right, so we're going to have, we're going to create a baseline parking standards for numbers, and the design and the other will be, the heart of an initial design guideline. Okay, and then also offering that they also could submit a parking proposal that's different from our baseline standard.
Yes.
Okay, so we have homework. Okay, so, next, on the bottom of page seven, Victor's comment, same comment regarding the inclusion of the term industrial, we already killed that one.
Well, we're putting it in the parking.
Yeah, we're putting it in the second, it's parking the parking lot again.
But there was another one here, let's see, under 112, Route 37.2.
Is that Melissa's?
That's probably Melissa's. And, um. It says within.
Mount Airy town limits.
Oh, it's the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just carry it over in this section.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I can take it down.
Yep.
Page eight.
Okay, there's nothing I see on eight?
Um, there's, over here.
Okay. Okay. Oh, okay.
Section C2.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Melissa, that's...
So we had a maximum of 15,000 square feet and he said to say 65,000 square feet. And then that's what Bill had. Yeah, both had it, okay.
What page do you want?
Well, we're on, now we go back, we're on eight of 17, C, committed uses, the last sentence about the 15,000 square feet. And then we have Melissa and Bill's comments, both on that one, talking about the proposal 65,000 square feet. And we did a lot about it, let's find it out.
I said that I was supporting what was written in the document. Not long and lengthy. She supports it.
I liked your comment.
I thought, well, I did a little research, I'm just trying to figure out what different companies are doing.
Yeah, I thought that was really...
I actually kind of drew from what our residents were calling in and we wanted to...
Yeah, yeah. So people looked at the comment that Melissa, yeah, yeah, with the different stores that are actually interested in being smaller and it might actually...
Yep. Trader Joe's.
What do you guys think? This is a...
So this is obviously the meat of our, of our plans, our thoughts, our concerns. It's multi-pronged. Number one, and he says it's been a long time, well, it's not going to... Number one is, market is the market is, right? We're not going to dictate if this, if the mound area is going to say 59,000 square foot grocery, you know, high-end grocery store because that's what the market is, I'm not going to tell them they can only build 57. They're going to tell me what they want to build and we're going to see if we can design it so that the planning commission wants it in here. So the market is going to determine a lot of what can come here. So to say that there are smaller versions of stores does not mean that they would come here. They may be able to build a 22,000 square foot Target. They, Target may say, I will never build that product here, that's not going to make me any money in this market. When I need a 60,000 or I need something economies of scale important. That's one thing. So the market determines a lot. But the second part is the issue, you know, the concept that we're going to go through a very lengthy concept plan, preliminary plan, detailed design plan, and also a special exception for uses that are 100% going to be included in a town center of size, not every single property, but in a town center of size or perhaps more, the ones that we're working on, is very problematic to think that there's another process in C and G, someone else who's going to determine whether or not that use is acceptable or not. So we could be, for example, in a concept plan, doing a design and spending, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars on plans and have a use going maybe in a parallel track, it doesn't say whether they're parallel or we have to stop one to start the other, and maybe in a parallel track it declined so that whatever design we put in front of the planning commission is not valid because it wasn't valid, one of the uses wasn't valid in front of a different. I don't think that, I think we should all accept that at least on some projects, they're going to be larger than 15,000 to require a special exception to get that approval. I don't think it's necessary in the context of what you guys have all said tonight. Number one, you guys are going to decide design, whether you like it or not, whether it fits in with character and all the things. Giving you the discretion to say that it's acceptable to the town, but to limit it before it even gets to the planning commission or to other people, I think is going to be problematic. I mean, there was a good comment before from multiple people, town center, one of the concepts of town centers is that people are going to come from other places to come here. People will not come here for 7,000 and 8,000 square foot stores. There are already those stores here. They're not going to come here for that. I don't drive to Columbia from Alme for a 7,000, I go to White Mountains, because I don't have a White Mountains, I go to other stores of size, but I don't need to go somewhere else and get the same exact uses I'm getting in my town. So I think we have to anticipate that there are going to, or needs to be, other types of uses not existing or complementary that are of size to take advantage of its location in the town center on Route 27 directly off Route 70. And to add restrictions to that size, we could add these special exception process, I think is...
Well, the only thing I would comment on that is, isn't this, isn't this similar to where we have the drythrus? We're all redundant. So the town already had enough, we're limited restriction.
65,000.
65,000. That's already in zoning ordinance. So now we have, we've added another layer here, and I don't really have a dog in this fight, but it seems to me it's the same rationale as the drythrus. Meaning that you all are the ones that are going to look at it, make a recommendation, it's going to go out for public notice, which has already been, because it's, public notice built into this process. And now it's going to go to another board for approval, they come back to you. So again, it's the same process as we talked about for drythrus. So I'm not so sure, I think his comments are valid, as it changes the process.
We have the 15,000 square feet, and correct me if I don't remember this correctly, was because we were concerned about businesses being drawn from the town. Or wasn't that, we were concerned about the town business, and we didn't want some huge thing, or our businesses competing against that. That's what I remembered about it.
Well, there was a discussion that we didn't want competition between our downtown, but the reverse would, I mean, if we make it too boutiquey, that's not going to work. But if we make, if we are thinking that we're going to have boutique stores in these MXP zones, it will directly compete with our downtown. So there's a balance. I, way back when we started, I think we were approaching this MXP as sort of like incremental type of development. So our downtown, our sizes are limited to 15,000 square feet. And then, so we thought of the MXD zone, when we started this journey a couple of years ago, that's okay, well, you know, we would, we're envisioning that 15,000 to 65,000, you know, in a special exception realm. I don't know if that's still applicable after we...
Again, taking that 10,000 level, 10,000-foot approach.
Right.
You all are going to see which property, there's only a handful. You guys are going to be able to see which property you're going to want that special exception approved and which ones you're not. There's only a handful that could even go to that scale, okay, of development. So again...
We have two conversations though. One, is there, does it, do we require it? You know, if we're going to make it a special exception, or are we putting different, are we, are we thinking that it doesn't need any special exception and then up to 65,000 would be a use permitted by right? Or would there be, you know, additional considerations by the planning commission if it were to break that 15,000 square foot threshold?
15,000 square feet is not a whole lot of square footage.
But the whole MXD is the additional consideration, right? It is designed. The first conversation you and I had, we said, don't put in and create something that cannibalizes downtown. And I think that's a great, you know, starting process. It's going to be different, but there are already design standards built in that are an additional step that aren't, you know, a standalone product.
I think the concern is that we, from the planning commission, is the big box that's all we're going to get.
Let me get, Sean, you're after Roxanne. Roxanne, you go next.
I think we have to look at this too in knowing that some of these stores, people are, people are driving up and down 70 and they don't live here in Mount Airy. But let's say they're driving home and they need something and they can, the town centers or whatever, they can go in. And we do not want to restrict any type of economic or monetary thing that's going to help the town of Mount Airy. And by having some of these larger stores and they're not, I wouldn't come into Mount Airy for something, you know, like that's here. I'd make that a day trip or something, okay? But if I'm on my way home and there's something of a, whatever, I'm not going to make any names, but something where I can stop, a dry cleaner, whatever, on my way home and it's in Mount Airy, then the business person is going to benefit and the town of Mount Airy is going to benefit. And I think we don't want to, we don't want to restrict it too much because then the businessman's going to say, well, I can't, you know, I'm not, I'm not coming here. And then the developer has trouble filling what he, what he's got. We can't, and we're sitting there with vacant buildings, we don't want that.
Okay, Sean, you want to add?
Can you just put an analogy to it? What's the idea behind shopping malls originally? It was that there's a anchor store, which is a large department store, and all the smaller stores inside the mall flourish because people go to those department stores and they wander throughout the mall. So why wouldn't we want to allow this 10,000 square feet for a large store that's going to bring people here and allow the other stores and shops to flourish? I don't think that we could say necessarily it's going to deter small business in the town. I'd like to think that it would help small business in the town.
Okay, did you finish Mike? You're next.
Walmart came, when Walmart came to Mount Airy, everyone was freaking out that they were going to take business away from the town. They did. They increased business in this town.
They did.
When you're talking about the corridor, which most of these properties empty on to or affiliated with, the corridor is driven by 20,000 plus people every day, and I would say 80% of them don't live in Mount Airy. They're going from somewhere in Westminster, they're going to work.
At least half of them don't.
At least, if not more, we don't know those statistics. But when they come home, they don't want to go all the way back up to Taylorsville or Eldersboro. They want to stop to pick something up on their way.
So they get home, they're home.
If you're going to be building small stores that compete with your little stores in the downtown district, they're not going to stop there. It never gets them acquainted with our town and it doesn't fulfill their needs. 27 is not going to decrease in traffic because we will it. It's never going to decrease in traffic. And we don't own the traffic. It's not, it's not us that puts the traffic out there. Why not exploit it with things that people want in our own town?
Easy in, easy out.
And where can I get a sandwich?
Right.
The box stores have been demonized in this town for too long, and you guys start waking up to them.
Well, when you go down and all those stores that are down around Walmart now, they're all busy every day.
Because Walmart drew them there.
Right, exactly.
Chuck, you're next.
I go there for the grocery store.
Again, I'll get your enforcement issue. Someone builds this and, and again, one imagine, you have 15,000 square foot next to 15,000 square foot, both go vacant. Someone comes in and they want to do, you're going to say, no, you can't combine the two.
Buy both of them and knock the wall.
So again, you want to be mindful of not creating enforcement or a nightmare later on. Again, I think to some degree, some of this is a walkability issue. If you're trying to create a walkable environment, what Walmarts tend to do or Targets, you have this huge black, blank wall that's cold and doesn't have any interest to it. If you design it where it's active fronts for, that they achieve that 50,000, but there are three of them and they got 45,000 square feet for one of them, but they have multiple entrances, what's the problem? You've achieved your, now you may be cheap, maybe you're competing against the downtown, that's a, that's a separate challenge, I don't dispute that. But you have to, again, what's the zoning ordinance for, what are other economic development strategy for? If you're trying to deal with use and law, that's one thing. So again, try to not complete this, you're not going to solve all your problems with one ordinance.
Right.
Exploitation.
There's, there's a point also that I can understand the interest in protecting the existing downtown businesses. They have a risk of standing like the stump in the garden park. There is a certain level at which police power justification for economic competition disappears. The other thing that I'd like to pick up on is kind of a metaphor, it was suggested by Tom earlier. If I'm reading this correctly, we're now in the zoning ordinance portion of the proposal. And we're talking about what sounds essentially like design or someone said operational sorts of circumstances. I'm not certain that this kind of distinction that's being drawn based on the square footage of the store may be appropriate in the zoning ordinance. Now, if we get back to what it is that this, that makes this work, the district is supposed to represent, again, we've talked about flexibility. But it's designed, it's something that someone is going to bring to you to determine whether or not this proposal works at this location in this community. And a lot of those concerns may, because we don't know who's going to bring it, which property it is necessarily, and what the components of it are going to be, to try to sit here and think now about, I don't want to create a one-size-fits-all solution to everything that may happen in the future. Maybe somewhat self-delusional. So if some of these details, as has been suggested, can be left to what these mixed use, these kinds of programs are about, it's to be, you want to try and leave some of this for the design submission phase of this, to see if the design, based on certain guidelines or standards, actually can force you to go.
So is the consensus? I have a comment. So Heather, she's about to. No, so I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with going to the 65,000 square feet. However, the, way back in our, you know, 85%, 15%, so I would not want the one business to be able to be 85%. So I think that if we want to go to 65%, I'm sorry, 65,000 square feet, there's got to be something in the other part of that, the ordinance where that's not going to take up, that's not going to be the one business component of that development. So it would just be one big box.
Rob, come on in.
I agree with that too. You want to fill in with a whole bunch of little stores.
I don't do big boxes, I'm with the first.
You want to fill in with the candle store and the, you know, unique clothing and that stuff.
I don't think there's a problem with that concept. I mean, I agree. Because I mean, from our perspective, we want to have multiple of everything. So I don't think as a standard to say, you know, your 15% can't be this, or your 85 can't be this one use, since you're trying to make mixed use, you know, the centerpiece of this town center. I don't think that's a problem or standard. Just figure out, we just have to figure out what kind of line use can work for, but I think that's...
Okay, then I'm, then I'm good with it.
All right, so we would essentially accept Mr. McCollum's suggestion to just mirror the CC of the 65,000 square feet.
Without a special...
And that's from lines zero to, or whatever, zero to 65,000.
Yes.
You guys can ask a question about appropriate size.
Right.
Okay.
We might not ever see that. We might not ever see that 65,000.
About 65,000. Yeah.
So you're saying 165 is not a good scale?
I'm thinking, yeah, anything over 65,000 would be...
A special exception.
And that mirrors what is existing in the community commercial district.
Over 65 is...
Is a special exception.
It's a special exception.
Like their eyes are...
Look, I see it, I see that...
Got the average.
Well, what happens is, it goes back to the mechanics again, meaning at what point will we know that it's acceptable? So up there is a picture of the Rio.
Can't see it, but...
But if you looked at your email, you would have pulled it up.
No, I haven't.
Right here is a picture of the Rio.
That's the one that...
This is a Target right here.
Yeah, that looks pretty good.
What's the approximate size of that crate?
Most Targets, I have to look up, this one, this one's a pretty big one, but most Targets are around 80,000. So this Target is two levels. So it's not that sprawl of a Walmart where a Walmart is 160 and it just goes on... So it's not that tall of a Walmart where a Walmart is 160 and it just goes on forever and it's a football field.
What if it's gross, just like?
Why do we say, if we say gross?
Well, what I mean is, it's two levels, and within the rest of this town center, it does not stick out as a big box. But it is the draw. So you have people coming downtown, I'm going to hit Target, then I'm gonna hit the beer line, I'm gonna hit this spot, I'm gonna hit Barnes &amp; Nobles, all of those things, as you said, in a day trip. So one of the factors to think about is, Mount Airy is a new frontier for a lot of retailers. And we need, these draws are not only for bringing in people and keeping the residents shopping here instead of going on day trips other places, but those draws are also for the commercials. There's gonna be a lot of commercial players who say, I'm not taking the chance of going to Mount Airy and opening up a brand-new 70,000-square-foot spot. If someone does, a big guy like Target says, I'll do the two-level and fit it into the town center, not only does it draw people, but it draws you that Barnes &amp; Nobles. It draws you the other, it draws that Trader Joe's and all these things, or maybe even a boutique, you know, movie theater. The things that you really want follow something big and something popular. So that draw is not just for people, it's for the businesses. And what I'm getting at is, if someone says, I would do a two-level at 72,000, okay, we're a little bit above 65,000, what is the mechanism? It's a special exception. And back to what my brother was saying earlier, which is, if I go through $400,000 worth of engineering and planning, and here's a 72,000-square-foot piece in the middle of it, and all of a sudden, we're all thinking it looks pretty good, but the ZHE says, no. A year into it, how do I work my planning around that? I didn't know if, because this MXD has so many steps. We have a concept, we have a prelim, we have a site, and then permits. Can the board have the wherewithal to make, can they approve over 65 where they see that it is merit-based? If there's something that comes in that is, yes, that is what we want in the town because they're coming in here and bringing two other retailers with them that we really want to sidetrack everyone on a special exception, that's really not in the board's hands. And also puts me in a position where I'm, am I spending more money while I wait to do this and designing more, and then get shut down? And then I go back to Target and say, you gotta make it 65. And they're like, I wanna be 8, now I'm gonna be 65. Well, we're not gonna do it. And then I lose them and I lose these two. You have a lot of steps in your, in this MXD. Is there a way to give you the power to look at going above that 65 early, later, whatever it is, and give you some kind of, if there's a justification statement or so to that effect?
Well, can I just respond to something?
I would think.
Yeah, we can't hardly hear you, Pat.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I was just talking to him, sorry. I would think that before you would start, I mean, at this point, you know a general idea of what you wanna do. You have some ideas. You might have some retailers coming to you, or you might have somebody that you're talking to, some of those retailers. I would think at the beginning, you would know who one of those stores are going to be, like the, what do you call it?
The anchor.
Anchor.
The links, yeah, the anchor store, okay? So they would give you an idea of how much would work for them. So knowing that we would prefer not to be more than 65,000 square feet, but we're willing to grant a special exception, if it makes sense, to bring other smaller retailers to that area. That you would be able to come to us in the beginning and say, you know, Target, it may be on board, but look in about 72,000, so that we could work with that from the beginning.
And that's what I was trying to say, instead of us going to a different body for that approval. A special exception is not heard by the planning commission, right?
Right. Right, it's the Board of Appeals.
It would go to something else for approval. What he's saying is, okay, let's just use 65,000. If 65,000 is permitted, and give the board discretion over, the board, not someone else.
Right, not the zoning appeal.
Give the board discretion, basically the power to grant a special exception under some other name, but the board can look at 65 and over and say, yes, we like it only because it fits these, you know, there's some criteria for it. It's bigger than our thing, but we like it because it works for the things that we're doing. By having a special exception, it's a completely, we just, there's no.
Correct, correct. We don't have any.
We have his former Board of Southern Appeals chairperson sitting right here.
Wait a minute, Mike has a hand. Mike, you should talk.
The Board of Appeals acts on the recommendation of the staff and the recommendation of a plan in zoning. So if you came right away and said that there's, and you could even say there's a possibility that it's, we're gonna hear what you're gonna say, and we're gonna say, we're gonna recommend it to the Board of Appeals. The staff then gives them their recommendation. I can't speak for the Board of Appeals as it is now, but generally the feeling is, if the staff recommends approval, the Board of Appeals generally approves that. And it can be done right, like Patty says, right at the beginning.
Mike and then Chuck.
So I think this goes back to some of the experiences that this town has suffered with James Way Aint's Super Fresh. There are no provisions for bankruptcies and empty stores. We find that not appealing in our town. I don't know what a solution to something, you buy that where it needs to be torn down or something. And I think for the planning commission, to unilaterally make a decision on such a size of store puts an undue burden on them, and I think they'd want more support.
It's already in the code. It's already in the code. The commercial code is 65,000.
Yes, but they're trying, they're trying to circumvent it.
No, I know, but you're saying that we are putting a burden. And what I'm saying is, it's already in the town code that council passed, not us. That's what I'm saying.
No, I understand that, but.
He's saying that we're putting a.
I agree with the codes, it's written, because I think that adds a little bit more assurance for your decisions and for the future. And I think it can be, I think it can be expeditiously. But I, my concerns on all these large stores are the same, and we see them. And it scares our town for a number of reasons. Security, empty stores, you know.
We got that whole Carroll Medical Center where Super Fresh used to be.
Yeah, but how many years?
Look how long.
Let's hit, does Chuck Heather send five?
My job here is to provide you guidance on just the, first of all, if, what is the purpose of this requirement for 65,000 square feet? If you're gonna just deal with a single story, you could. And again, if your purpose is just to deal with the facade, walkability, all that, or maybe it is an overall massing issue, you could just deal, rather than total square footage, you could be the footprint, which allows for, again, an incentive for them to go up. And within that, that's one thing. Again, all of this is assumed that it's gonna be approved by, I care of your town council, and it goes into law, and secondly, with regard to special exceptions, I caution you to have specific standards by which the Board of Zoning Appeals reviews and approves anything. So you're gonna have to have specifics of why you're gonna go above 65,000 square feet, not because they like it or because they like the pictures. You gotta have real specific standards that, because ultimately, if they meet the standards, that Board of Zoning Appeals is supposed to approve it. Now, if they don't, they're gonna be in trouble when it gets challenged and if they don't have a reason for it. So it's gotta have specific standards. Otherwise, allow, again, my experience has been, the kind of discretion is better to handle by a planning commission and possibly even to a conditional use by the town councils. Only when you wanna allow for that, I hate to say politicizing a particular development approval, but don't put the Board of Zoning Appeals in that, that they wanna be able, what the criteria are, they meet it or not, and not be into that kind of situation.
Right, right.
I have a question. So does anyone know, oh, you're looking at Heather. Just, for example, the Beck property on the, I guess that's the east side of 27. Do we know what the square footage of that is compared to the Rio or any of these?
The acreage?
Yeah.
So the R7 portion, I believe it's about 30 acres. I do not have the.
Town, well.
So ours is 30 acres.
Town, the west side, the town center side, the smaller side, I think that is 30 and 50.
30 and 50. What's the Rio?
What's the Rio?
So, yeah, do you have those?
I don't know the square footage of the Rio. The Kettlin's is massive. It's not even comparable. Rio, town center side.
We know it's pretty big.
They have no structured parking in Kettlin's. It is all surface.
Yes, it is.
So the Rio is an interesting comparison. But they also have restructured parking, which is really expensive because they're commanding rents. They have three big boxes. They have Target, Kohl's, and Galleon's.
Jigs.
And Jigs. And, no, the older guy. Barnes &amp; Nobles, and so they're commanding higher rents. And then they have all the way across the bridge, that old section across the bridge. So they were able to go vertical with all their parking. So it's a smaller footprint, but the Beck property's going to have issues in rent versus structured and surface parking and also topography. That is where things are going to get interesting.
Oh, you're talking about the east side.
Both sides.
West is a lot smaller.
West side is gonna be, that's got the most topography and that's gonna be the harder.
Well, it's got the hill.
The west side is a little smaller.
Yeah, the west, what'd you say, 30 acres on the west, 50 on the east?
Roughly, yeah.
Ballpark.
West side, the smaller side is on the town center.
Between here and Watkins, between here and Watkins.
Right.
Okay, so.
So the west side connects to Center Street. The west side is what's gonna be downtown. And I think to go to your point, you have a, you already have a town code that says if you wanna go over 65, you go to a special exception. And you're creating an MXD zone. If you wanna say, if you are in an MXD and you wanna go 65, you go through this process, as opposed to using the town code to go to a special exception. If you're in MXD, we want you to go to, is it a special meeting? Is it a statement of justification that's viewed by all of those? You have a chance to streamline the process, and if you want other agencies involved, you can put them involved, but you might be able to streamline it as opposed to submit a special exception, go to this board, this appeal's gonna come back. If it's vertically integrated into the MXD process, then it will hold different plans. And my concern is, with a lot of retailers, it's a lot of who's coming to the party. There's not a lot of, I'm the first one there. Target's in. You know, a lot of it is, Target wants to see the concept. What's the concept? How many rooftops do you have approved around here? Okay, well, I'm thinking about it, and then I'm talking to three other guys. The weird thing about it is Target going on, you know, it is that. And I might be way into the concept, trying to tell Target, yeah, they approved 50,000 houses. You can put a Target there. And at that point, I'm way into it. And when I come back with that, hey, can we put a 70,000-square-foot building? I don't wanna go back around to get here. I'm just saying, in MXD, we can create a condition to, and you can create who you want to approve it in there, just to streamline the process.
We have Leslie, and then we have Roxanne.
So I have, well, I'll say the other thing. So I think, I definitely understand what you're saying. No question. And I think that we, I was playing with some numbers. I was saying, so if there was something like 10% or less, you know, that they wanted, that we could perhaps have a mechanism. What I would be concerned about is, if everybody already knew that, then they would just say, all right, well, we're already, we're now at 72 automatically. And so I don't.
So the other thing to consider with this is, and we haven't gotten to the height discussion, but we require a minimum of two stories for our height. So are we worried about the collective square footage? Or are we just worried about the massing of the, I am really sorry. My hands don't work this late at night. I apologize.
Throw it back.
Craig, with a 65,000 square foot footprint, be more digestible.
That's too big.
But this is what we're talking about in CC.
But go back to what we said in the beginning. The market is the market. So your concern that everybody's gonna go to 72 is, I would say, invalid. Only someone is, someone may, but there are gonna be a lot of people saying, I wanna do the store that's this size because this is what the market bears. It's not like everybody's gonna run in and go, ooh, you know, everybody can put 120,000 square foot stores. It wouldn't be like that.
But I think also to your concern is, when you get the preliminary plan, if there's one giant store and you say, there it is. No. I mean, you are reviewing the preliminary plan, and you can say, no, this is not the vision of mixed-use town centers. The vision was to have multiple stores. So I think us circumventing percentages and saying, ha, we followed code. It is so design-driven, you can say no based on so many arguments, it doesn't. I don't think that that's a way to go around. And also, we are trying to make a kind of town center. You can't put these multifamilies and things and say, there's one store in the area you can use. It goes.
I was just talking about the west store that time. It was really just 7,000 feet. That's all. That's the difference between 65 and 75.
It's such a minimal amount. Why worry about?
Exactly. It's such a minimal amount, so.
Right, but what I'm saying is, again, we're creating a code. You're creating an MXD code, and you're just creating the mechanisms in the code that allow you to make rules. So what I'm saying is, if you're going to allow up to 65,000 feet, fine. If you say, if it is above 65,000 square feet, we don't have to decide right now, but this is the mechanism you will use. You can say, yes, it has to be special exception, or you can say, in MXD itself, you can get approval for over 65 by following.
Or it has to be. You're saying it's gotta be two-story anyway.
You're just creating a mechanism for that approval.
We require, our height requirement as proposed is that nothing can, it has to be a minimum of two stories. Whereas though that's, you know, architecturally or it's two floors, the building itself has to be, as Craig pointed out, that it's a two-story park.
That one is, you know, that particular example is a two-story.
So is that 80,000 square feet gross floor? So there's 40 and 40,000?
Honestly, yeah, I've been in that one. That one's pretty much just a sandwich. It's two floors, 40, 40. But in general, I don't wanna get into the exact look and things of building. It's really about creating a mechanism for you to approve it within the same process that you're, because you're gonna be so into this process from concept all the way through, you want everything in that MXD and the project in that flow and in your guidance at the end of the project. Taking the side steps out of the MXD process to go to ZHE or Board of Appeals and things, and coming back, I don't think is the purpose of the MXD.
Well, your design and your look are gonna be different on this side of 27 than they are on the other side of 27. This is a zoning that allows you the flexibility to do all kinds of things.
Why don't, I don't know. Why don't we do a maximum of a 40,000-foot footprint?
Yeah. It'll be two stories.
And then you can go two stories, 40,000, 40,000, and you're.
Well, I don't. Well, I don't, again, going to...
I like that.
Again, going to flexibility. I don't want to create boxes here. We're creating a code. So, what you're doing is, you have a maximum square footage that's allowable. If you want to go over that square footage, whatever form it takes, here is the mechanism to get our approval to do it.
So, why couldn't we go ahead then and say, leave it with the 65,000 square foot for the footprint?
Right.
Because market may demand it, may not, but anything above that is up to, let them come with the design of what they're going to put together, and then we can say, that one store is so massive compared to the other stores, that's not going to work. But we let them bring it to us, and we can set the limit of 65,000 as a footprint because it's already in existence, and we'll just add that it's the footprint, not the total square footage of the store, and let them bring us the design, and we can say, that is dominating. That is not the visual that we wanted for that type of thing. Let them design it, let them figure out who's going to move into it.
You just got to put in language that, right now, your town code wouldn't allow you to say yes. I'm just saying, put in language that allows you to say yes, you'd like what's above.
The ordinance.
I'm not talking about the ordinance, I'm talking about an action.
We've had a conversation, Bob. My name is Town Council, but we've had a conversation, so let's finish that one, you need to start with yours, okay?
I understand.
But it allows you the flexibility.
It's written right now, can I get that approved?
Yeah, what we're saying is that's what I'm proposing.
Okay, got that. Now, Bob, you had a conversation with Tom.
Yeah, I was wondering if this stuff goes from planning to the town council, but in this case, it does not.
No.
We'll approve the ordinance, okay, the MXD ordinance, but then, you know, the shopping centers and all that kind of stuff, buck stops right here. So, if we, if we're going to give you 130,000, 65 and 65, and we're going to give Rob that, but we're not going to give your brother that for some particular reason.
I don't mind if he doesn't get it.
We're going to have to be able to justify that with some real reasoning and stuff.
There's one other point that we were concerned about, and we started with Center Street in particular because the proximity must be complementary to downtown because we have basically a postage stamp downtown. Our best choice of expanding our downtown is to make that area complementary. Okay? The other concern we had was one of scale because that particular area has residential all the way around it. So, size and where those larger entities are located are going to be really, really important. Our concern, there's so many reasons why we want to do infill first, existing infrastructure and all of that, but it also says the complementariness of each of those designs and how it matches and fits in and works with what's already around it. That's going to be challenging, but very important to us.
And that's what the patent book is going to do, whether we're going to approve it or not. We approve this part or not. Heather, you have another?
I, I myself out. Okay, Tom?
Just, and I'm not saying these are insurmountable, these are issues that need to be looked at, and bright our minds here can probably maybe figure a way around this, but the two things that I think you do have to remember is that once you, as a zoning matter, find a use of right, your ability to design a way, your ability to use, to partake in that use of right, some would argue becomes limited. Particularly where your considerations deal with things like impact, is there are arguments that while the town council in passing, an ordinance that allows a particular use of right is already considered, the adverse impacts, weigh the twos and the froes, the positives and the negatives, and determine that, you know, an impact is acceptable. And the second thing is that, you know, we do have to deal with state code that defines what a Board of Appeals is, what its role is, what its powers are, and to the extent that you simply attempt to, in effect, transfer what is really a special exception process vested in the Board of Appeals to the Planning Commission, one I could envision somebody arguing, well, you can't do that. So, again, I'm not saying these are insurmountable problems. I'm sure there are things that can be done, but I just do raise those two issues for consideration at this time.
Would there be any, and I'm going back to the drive-through conversation, are there any, not specific, but development standards that we could incorporate rather than just a variance or a special exception, but put them as development standards for those uses that are over the 65,000 square feet? I don't know what those are right now. But criteria, if you will...
Your two lawyers' hands up, that's not good.
And this isn't wild talk, but I'm just...
Your attorney, I think, pointed out an important distinction here. Special exception is really for use issues. We're talking about mass, saying we're talking about square footage, the same use potentially. So, again, I'm Frederick City kind of guy. I rewrote Frederick City's ordinance. The Planning Commission there was given the ability to modify, quite frankly, in the mixed use, pretty much all the standards. It was like a blanket provision, all the standards, if you want to modify them, you come to them, and then you make your case, and you talk about flexible. So, but it's in the standards, it's not the use. So, the deviation from the use absolutely should go to the Board of Zoning Appeals if you have a particular use, but don't get, don't inflate size, square footage is in the same use, and say, well, it's 65,000 square foot, we're going to move over if it's the same use. And that's where I think is an important distinction too.
And our existing regulations for, Rob, thank you.
Sorry, I can help myself.
No, have a good night. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you for listening.
So, I mean, our special exception standards for the community commercial districts are not germane to what we're trying to achieve in MXD. So, we would, it's not as simple as just saying, you know, that these standards will apply to the CC district in MXD. They require very specific setbacks, and they have to be set back in the road, so it really, it's counterproductive to the revision, if you will. So, I just wanted to just give you the thought that our existing standards, we, no matter what route we go, we have to come up with specific criteria to evaluate those uses over 65,000.
I have as much a question as anything else initially. In your local code, many local ordinances, there's a lot of planned development aspects of the code. You may have a parallel that you can borrow and use here that's already in existence. Sometimes there's a baseline threshold residential density for a particular type of residential product that then can be augmented or enhanced, however you want to describe it, by the Planning Commission as part of the review process to increase that residential density based on the developer or applicant meeting certain essentially performance standards, which I think might be what Heather was getting at. And, but those are all essentially design-driven, again, design-related, I should say, considerations. Would it be possible to perhaps, instead of reinvent the wheel, why don't we borrow from that kind of an analysis that this Planning Commission is already doing now and regard the adjustments to the square footage thresholds or maximums in the same way that you would if there's certain performance criteria, if you're calling that, whatever they are? If the applicant comes in and can justify good reason to do this, just like an applicant in that residential context could justify the propriety of the additional density, and you all have, that's something you've already worked with and you've already approved in the past, why not just use the same format? I agree. I don't believe, I don't believe it's safe for anybody involved in the process to try to interject a separate special exception kind of exercise as part of what is essentially a design-driven development approval process. You may already have your solution in a residential context if you just want to borrow that and use it as this, and you may not want to limit it to merely square footage maximums for a particular commercial user. You may want to look at it in any number of terms. We talked about parking. There's other criteria or other facets of it. You may already have some of the tools in your toolbox if you just sort of tailor it to this.
Heather, what do you think?
I think I am willing to do anything that the Planning Commission wants to explore. I, I believe that there is definitely merit and advantages of keeping the process in the Planning Commission.
Yeah, that makes sense. Dumping it off the Board of Appeals is, that's a no-go.
I lived through the development of the Walmart, and it, you know, as Dr. O'Brien alluded to, it was, it was a traumatic thing for that area at the time, and then that's how we got these regulations. So...
That was one issue.
But as residents of this community, I mean, I guess, you know, you drill down to, you know, your visioning of this, you know, what the end result would be. It can be achieved several different ways. I need some direction as to...
I'm sorry, close the smell of the candy guy.
I don't think they're going to do it.
They'll fade us.
Okay.
Sorry, Heather.
Is there, you know...
Can we, I mean, I like the suggestion about having some sort of toolbox with...
Performance standards.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think, we all agree, we shouldn't be dumping the Board of Appeals. I don't agree on that one. Okay? We all also agree...
That's an important distinction that gets us...
Gets us some points. Okay, we all do like the idea of, I guess I'm off, just, I'm off of the 15,000 square foot, okay? We all kind of agree on that one.
Victory. Okay.
But how we do this, and I do kind of agree, the market is your market, I just don't want to, and I live on Lookout Avenue, so Beck Properties right next to me, and Center Street is right next to me, so I do have a very good message for us two on what I'm going to look at behind my pine trees. So, and it's downhill for me, thank goodness. But, so, how can we take, again, have something where the market can drive everything, but that we get what we want?
Just general poll, I mean, is there a consensus that the Planning Commission would like to develop a process that stays within the Planning Commission to consider those uses above 65,000?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So, so, you know what, allow me to research other codes for that because up to this point, this is the first we've actually had meaningful discussions with respect to this code revision. So, not only are we going just to 65,000, we are talking about going beyond. So, allow me to react to that and see what's out there, see what our current code may provide, and see what I can bring back for consideration.
Well, if it's much like government county, wouldn't they also, I mean, I used to live against the way I'm settled.
They don't have any restrictions.
They don't have a limit.
Yeah.
We're talking about the tiers, but I think, I think the language that Dave was just referencing, and I think it's easily found, I think we can all do a little bit of research, I think we're all going to look at a lot of these things and see, hey, here's one example, maybe this will work, and then tinker with it, or you guys can do it how you want, but I think the language exists in many different places to give you quality design.
Yeah, I don't want to spend Heather's time or her life reinventing the wooden house.
I think it's out there, and I think we'll all help.
Okay, that would be great. Moving forward, one, two, three.
And Bill, thank you very much for bringing that up and initiating that. In addition to, well, we expected it from the CASrunners.
No surprise there. Okay, so, are we at a point where who's brain-dead and who wants to stop, or?
What, can, can we look forward to see what else we have to discuss?
Sure.
Okay.
Most of my assignments were related to that exact issue.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for all your comments, they're very much appreciated, and your time. Thank you. Come join us again.
Hotels, and just going to bring you out to talk about hotels, special exception, but that's all.
You know, I'd be happy to, I think it's an important piece that needs to be included in this. Absolutely.
I think that came up initially when we were, and I think the only reason that, I can't remember why we didn't include it, but I can tell you when I was looking through this earlier today in preparation for this very important meeting, when I first saw a hotel, I think was in Melissa's, I thought, that could be good as long as it doesn't get into that up to 65,000 square foot range, and I think that that's what we had talked about. In fact, I thought hotels were in there, like, small sort of...
We talked about hotels with the OPE.
Yeah, no, but we talked about it.
We talked about it.
We talked about two-tiered, sort of smaller hotels that fit in.
But now, with the way that we're doing this, then, you know, so we are...
We started our journey much different.
Yeah.
Carol Creek, I was also involved in that. Do you really want to specify, and I get, do you want to specify each individual use here? They're very specific.
Yeah.
For example, real estate office, I looked here, it's not listed. First of all, if you're going to do permitting uses, you need to be, I recommend it's more general. If you're concerned about particular uses, spell out what you don't want, and don't go down the road of trying to list every use because I guarantee you, you'll miss one, or there'll be a new use that's just going to pop up tomorrow that you're going to want to be there, and you're going to go out and go through an amendment process. So, okay, I think you want to rethink the specificity that you're going to put along your list here. It will do you a lot of grief later on if you do this.
So, if there was minutes of conversations, things that you can remember that were specific that you didn't want, those are the things that he's talking about.
So, making, so making one just general and coming back and then the...
I mean, again, sorry, tattoo parlors used to be foreboded. They're now the bomb. And, I mean, so it is really difficult, you know, if you want retail, retail, or office, office, and if you don't want, and again, wineries start to come in and all, you can't imagine, so you really want to think about what you don't want, and you're, I can think of a few of the things off the top of my head, and I'm sure you can listen to. Those are things you probably want to just say, these are, you know, you don't want, you know, the smelting operations or some, you know, noxious odors, and again, you may want to go into the performance standards of what kind of uses that generate loud noises or those things so that you can then start to draw those things out rather than individual uses, because I think you'll...
One of the first drafts didn't specifically enumerate it, but when we got into talking, we were really detailing our, how we wanted this to function. We wanted to be walking on a nice autumn day, and we wanted to go into the flower store and butcher shop, and we, we created a journey, so...
Are you going to create the only places to have this list? Only these?
Only, only those. So, and in one of my drafts...
Yeah, I would recommend if you can specify, allow for a mix of uses, again, it depends. I've seen once that they rarely specify, we want a true mix, we want it to be a certain percentages, or we want to try the cheaper range, and I think our mixed use requires you from, like, you have to have a minimum 15 non-residential or a minimum... or 50% commercial, and then between the two, we don't care, but you have to be, you don't want the big buildings, you want them to be able to reoccupy these things, but you want to, you want to deal with the problems, Chip. And I'm thinking, I'm not sure I can, I'm not qualified to tell you what this problem areas are. You know the, as you said, you've seen them coming.
Okay, I'm, I'm head nodding, you like that, his suggestion makes me...
So, we're just going to come up with larger categories of...
Things that we don't want as opposed to things that we are going to allow.
Kind of a little bit of both.
I will give you, Carol Creek has, and I can get you their ordinance online, they specify what they permit and they list also more specifically what they don't permit. And those are the kinds of, you may want to go to certain areas and say, what's that zoning ordinance? And I can tell you, Carol Creek has one like that.
A little bit more...
Yeah, and they have a Carol Creek overlay district that specifies what specific uses are not permitted in those areas.
So, you're permitting general categories and excluding specific uses.
Right, right.
Yeah, like, yeah.
I like that.
Yeah.
Too bad we didn't hear that before the O P, really. Too bad we didn't hear that before we...
Well, it was important for us to identify all 300 types of...
Right.
That is an exercise that we will...
That was such a fun...
This is back to your conversation about industrial. We're finding out from an economic development perspective, these neighbors and things like this, that want to come into your communities and they're artsy type of things, but they're also industrial operations, when they want to do certain artsy type of fencing or whatever. Well, you, that's a particular, they make fences, that's an industrial use, but it's artsy looking. Well, would you not allow that? And some people say, whoa, we want that. And, well, your use...
Then they get it and it's grinders and sanders and saws.
And I know, but I'm just saying, there's, there's performance standards on sun and on noise and those types of things that, or you may get a conditional use. You may certain ones that are in that area allowable, but they do have to go to a special exception process, because when they do have this, this types of, so again, those are things that you may want to think about.
Well, we do have conditions to use, page 12, 17, that, you know, states processes and equipment employed and good process shall be limited to those which are not objectionable or unreasonable by reason of odor, dust, smoke, dirt, or gas, you, we might as well prepare for it, yeah. So, we have, we have covered that. So, the, Phil, we're not, basically all of the remainder of your comments were the 65,000. I, okay, I don't want, I want to make sure that I'm not skipping anything.
No, you're right.
And Melissa stopped at that. So, comes out.
The last comment is the height. For the hotels, you've covered that.
We're just taking care of the hotels.
Yeah, the height. So, we propose 40 feet in height and...
How do you stay based on all the stuff that you guys talked about tonight? You're really giving quite wide open. Give yourself the opportunity that there is no height limit, it's the design, well, no, I shouldn't say that, because I mean...
We're not on a tight...
But, but, but why put it at a point that's right at where things are going to probably be? Like, these products, if we're able to, if the market bears, you know, two or three stories over first floor retail, they probably, you know, it might be 15 feet on the first floor retail, 12 feet for the next two. Those things are really close. Maybe the number gets a little higher and then you say, all right, it's 50 feet, but anything over 50 feet goes under that same standard that we had talked about for over 65,000 square.
But Mr. Oscar always pointed out, we don't have a bucket truck, remember that? We don't have that for the fire department.
Well, that's okay, then we go, then it wouldn't meet the A P F O, so then they couldn't get the approval. I mean, you still have to, you still have to meet that standard and we buy it, buy the truck. Yeah. And maybe somebody will buy the truck. There you go. Don't name the truck.
Craig has to drive it.
Craig will drive it. There's another thing, when you look at these... Some of these are just facades. You know, that's not a two-story, for example, that Barnes and Noble, that's not a two-story. So, there may be some design elements that aren't actually occupied, but are above the 40 feet because of design, because of the way they're designed. Also with topography, this is one thing we've run into Montgomery County many times, where do you measure from? Because there's going to be, some topography looks like this, and if it's a two-sided store, for example, where are you measuring? If there's a store on the bottom and then there's a store on the top, and they may be two separate stores, where are you measuring from? So, some of those, some of the height may be that, okay, we're going to give you up to this amount, but above that, I think the design standards then kick in. Okay, why are we giving you this? Because it works for this product or that product?
I kind of like that because I know now in my mind that I would envision something different on the left as you're going north, the right side of 27, different, I would envision something different if it was coming in here towards Center Street. The height would be lower coming into town here, you know, to help with the top, thank you.
Topography.
Topography, but also to be in line with the town, and what the town has as you're coming in downtown. But if you're on the other side, and you might need a three and a half or four feet, then that doesn't really...
Things will do, yeah, front to back, side to side, top of the hill, bottom of the hill, and the type of product that you're talking about, they're all going to have different things. I mean, sometimes you can use a building as a retaining wall, so it's built into the back, it's only got one side, but there's this top side that comes out the other side. Giving yourself some design flexibility, very much like all of the other provisions that we've been talking about, I think is important, and giving a specific number that says you can't do anything wrong with.
We're talking about a lot of different products that are vertically related. We're talking about multifamily units, those are four or five splits, they could be four stories, they could be five stories. Talking about residential, for ground floor retail, just the ground floor, it's definitely 15, 16, 20, and then go above it. If you're talking about things that are very vertical, parking garage, all these things, you don't want to put that height cap and then keep running into it over and over and over on different uses. You want to just judge as a sign overall, even have a higher point that, like you said, strikes out to a low point and then goes back into town, but height limits, it's definitely, as it's written now, is an issue.
Any thoughts? I think this one...
Want to quit here?
Yeah, really quick.
Well, I know, why are you quitting? One, I think you always need to establish a minimum standard for expectation, but as we talked before, your, your planned development provisions, you allow for modifications for that as part of the design, allow for that, for them to come in with that, I think it's achievable through that process.
Well, I think, Heather, is it possible for those, you know, situations, now that we're going to be looking at, I would ask if you know of any other ordinances that maybe pertain to that when it comes to the height? Maybe you could pass that along to Heather? Because I think now that we're, we're sort of expanding our horizons, that maybe we'll just expand our horizons when it comes to what should be here from other, other areas. And so, rather than for late break tonight, because it's just too, too late, maybe we'll just revisit that. Sorry Heather, we're fading fast.
It's okay. I just don't spend time.
I do want to say one thing, and I thank everybody that was here for their input, it's very important, and I also want to thank the Cass Brothers, because you're, you know, you're very flexible and willing and you have excellent suggestions, and coming in makes it a lot easier to develop what we're, what we're going through than to have any kind of animosity. And I really appreciate the fact that you're, you really have done a lot in helping to bring this to fruition, I appreciate that.
Okay, so on that point, we're going to stop and just jump over to a very quick update to the 27 quarter status update, which is probably, they're working on it?
Actually, we met, staff met with the consultants last week, and they have some, they're, they're working on their recommendations as a result of their, their studies. And I, the first quarter, we're planning for a stakeholders meeting, first quarter of 2017, planning on a stakeholders meeting and then presentation to planning commission and town council. But we're, we are, we're wrapping it up in the first quarter of 2017.
Great.
Yeah, did you have anything else to add, Barney? Okay, I want to say short.
Okay, sign ordinance work session, we had a fantastic session with town council, it's one of those days I never want to forget, so...
And I do apologize, I intended to have a bullet point of what was discussed, but I haven't been able to complete that for you. So, it is on my task list for this week, so I'll send that out to everybody. But we do need some additional discussions.
Yes, we do. Oh, yeah, we do.
Needs to be done before May.
Okay. Heather, do you have anything else to add? Okay. But, sorry, the meetings, the work session started at seven and ended at 9:25. Okay. We got a lot done. We did, we did. Okay, county, county VA's report, Bob?
I have nothing, simply because this is my second, maybe the only other one I've been to is a sign ordinance, I've done no E C meetings for two months and no, no planning commission meetings for two months.
Well, welcome back. Glad to have you back. Welcome back. Okay, so, next planning commission meeting, we have voted to have it on November 21st. I don't know, so I know it was a conflict between Judy and Patty, and I don't know who won.
I can, I can do either one, so...
It was better to stay.
Patty preferred it.
Okay. Do you need kitchen help, walk up coffee in the kitchen?
Okay. Okay, after you're done with the car, could you come up?
Before we shut, no problem.
You heard the 21st, right?
No, but I could go either way, so.
And for clients, we have some advocates coming from, like, Texas town, they have to fly in, so it's actually a little bit, yeah, Michigan and Texas, so.
Okay, so upcoming downtown, downtown master plan, we're just working on it, let's just say that, let's see what they have, anything? Okay, city minister reports here, okay, so all those in favor of joining the meeting, say aye.
So, your attorney, you mentioned the M P C A meeting, I don't know if you signed up for our M P C A, you all do very great in terms of your planning commission role here, but there is a planning commissioner training on Thursday, 1 o'clock, at 12:30. I hope you're all going to be there, and we've completed the, we're working at Frederick section to be right at 12:00, start at 3 o'clock, so we've got everything combined together, so I hope you look forward to seeing it there.
And this is the same train, it's off of M M L and...
Yeah, it's the same train, so if you've been there before and you've got that, you won't see the thing is...
I took a certificate on the 12:00.
Okay, so all those in favor, say aye. Okay, meeting adjourned at 10:07.